Welcome, and we will now begin our special meeting for Thursday, May 20th, 2021. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Codova.
Yeah.
Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Mayor Protem Vega.
Here.
And Mayor Osborne.
Here. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For those of you that are watching from home, you'll be happy to know that we discovered the issue as of Tuesday night. A wire, an actual hard wire, had been loosened or come loose, and we got it plugged back in. So streaming with video is available again tonight at thecityoflompoke.com. Click on City Council and view City Council meeting, or you can watch live on Comcast Channel 23. And last but not least, you can listen on KPEG 100.9 if you'd like to participate. City Council chambers are open for in-person attendance, and you're welcome to come on down and participate in person. Tonight's business is review and discussion of our 2021-2023 biennial budget. And we have presentation to begin kickoff with our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And I'm going to ask Shannon, do you know how to dim the lights? I will say, those colors are so much different than what I had on the screen. Very, very different. So I want to welcome the council. I want to welcome everybody that's here physically, as well as those that are watching or listening from home. Because I am proud to be able to be here tonight and present to the council a proposed balanced budget that for the first time in probably 10, maybe almost 15 years, that, and I put in big bold letters on my notes here, did not require any staff reductions, furloughs, or other operational cuts in order to balance the budget. It's been a long, long time coming. We actually were able to come forth with a balanced budget without any, you know, hard reductions or areas that we had to look at. And not to steal any of our finance director's thunder, I'll go one more little step, albeit it's small, we actually have a little bit of a surplus in the general fund. That hasn't happened in a very long time either. So as Dean will go into more detail on the budget and the potential surplus, just a reminder, we still have all the labor negotiations ahead of us, and we just don't know what CalPERS, you know, they can lower the discount rate, they can make changes, so that's always a big ticket item. We also have right now, unfortunately, some inflationary factors coming up, so we'll see. But our best projections for the budget, we do have a surplus, and I've been wanting to say that for some time now. So looking out over the next few years, it does appear the city is finally turning that proverbial corner and is now on track to continue to take the steps back to being a financially secure future. So that's also, sort of gives you the goosebumps all over being able to say that. Today's council meeting, though, is actually a council meeting, I want to point that out. It's not a workshop. So council, what's the difference? They can actually take action from the dais. If you have a majority vote on something, you can actually do that. We don't have to wait for another meeting. So should something arise that the council does want to see changed in the budget, it can put forth an action tonight, and if the majority votes on it, we can go back and make those changes. Starting it off, just a quick overview of the agenda. It's been a while since we've done any kind of department presentations, you know, what is, what did the different departments do? What were their accomplishments? And you'll be surprised through COVID what they were still able to do. It's, it's pretty amazing, everything that they were able to do. So we're going through and letting the department heads discuss that. I think they're actually going to have some of their managers who will be up here, so you can see who the people are behind the scenes, making sure everything runs. Our finance director will then move into the proposed budget for the '21 through '23. He'll be giving you an overview of that. He has some handy take-home gifts for you, too, at that point. He'll then move into the capital improvement plan to discuss that piece. And trying to catch up to my notes here. One thing to remember on the capital improvement plan, and this comes up every now and then, is the whole plan is not in the budget. It's only the, when you look at the actual plan, and again, don't want to steal Dean's thunder, and he's going to go into more detail. Only '21, '22, and '22, '23 are actually, that are in the CIP plan, will be in the budget. Everything else, all the way out to, I think it's like '20, '30, are plans. That's what we use to do planning for the city on where we need to do different improvements. So only capital projects that are actually in the budget document, which you'll get in a moment here, are actually the ones that are going to be going forward. And then after the budget and CIP, we'll be, in discussions on the new American Recovery Plan Act funds, or ARPA, as it's being called. And I'll get into that some more. It's, we had some setbacks from what we initially were told when that first came out, but I don't want to go into all the detail yet. We're going to talk about what the community survey results, we had about 795 people take the survey, so I do want to walk through that because they did take time and effort to put in and show you what they're looking at from the city. The other one that's up there, if you see, follow-up meeting June 3rd. So as we jump forward, I would like to ask sort of for another straw vote, show of hands. So on the June 3rd would be another special meeting to then take any other items that the council wants to discuss and have any possible changes. That would be another special meeting for the budget. So if I could see a show of hands for a June 3rd meeting. Perfect, okay. We will schedule that. And then the budget adoption is scheduled for June 16th. 15th? I put 16th, darn it. June 15th. That's my fault. So that would be the final adoption at that point. And again, at that point, we don't have to have the CIP adopted, we don't have to have the ARPA adopted. I think after we've seen the new guidance, and you'll hear more about that, I think the ARPA funds for the different projects we discussed, it's going to take a little bit more time for staff to digest what it is, and then for the council to understand how and what the requirements are for that. So moving forward, I just, I'm going to go ahead and ask our first department to come up. We're going to go in a, in order with the fire department being first, and we'll just go through each department. And then what I'm going to ask is suggest that council maybe ask your questions department by department, rather waiting to the end, because that way they'll have the department head here at the podium.
Councilmember Codova.
Want us to ask them the questions also, if we have any questions in regards to the CARES Act funding, or wait for that portion?
I'd wait for the CARES Act funding because that's, it's unfortunately really changed.
Roger that.
So, yeah. Brian?
All right. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council, members of the public. My name is Brian Federman. I'm currently serving as the interim fire chief for the Lompoke Fire Department. And I'll be starting off tonight's presentation with a look at things that we've accomplished over the last two years and things that we're looking to hopefully accomplish over the next two. Here's our organizational chart. The items that are not shaded in color represent the FTEs that are allocated to the fire department. There are 30. 28 of those are suppression personnel. And a significant point to this is that currently the fire chief spot is vacant, as well as one of our fire captain positions. The two shaded areas, I'll touch on in a little bit, are the positions that we had put forward as requests for improvement and focused within our life safety division. And I'll touch a little bit more on that here in a moment. Just quickly, from the fire department, our mission, vision, and core values. The Lompoke Fire Department is dedicated to serving the community of Lompoke by providing the highest level of service, community risk reduction, safeguarding life property, the environment, and economic vitality. And above all else, we are here to meet the needs of the public. And really, it's just that last line that signifies what we're here to do. When we look at the services that we provide, we provide a lot, but to break it down, we have administrative services, fire prevention, community risk reduction, our fire suppression, of course, emergency medical services, which is comprised of EMT basic, as well as advanced scope that several of our members participate in, urban search and rescue for the more technical side of the rescues, which are, have served to be very critical, from the mudslide debris flow to Northern California, many of our members have been deployed on that team, hazardous materials, detection and mitigation, our training, emergency management services, and I should put up there, or any other duties as assigned. So, over the last two years, our accomplishments, and as the city manager mentioned, even in the midst of COVID, the fire department could not stop doing what we are doing. And I would just commend and am proud to be a part of this organization, the men and women, what they have endured, like all of us, and the adversities we faced, I'm very proud of. Even in this time, we completed over 2,700 hours of training. Our department promotions in the last two years, three battalion chiefs, five fire captains, three fire engineers, and we also conducted two in-house firefighters, or brought on two academies with five fire personnel. I would point that out, if you kind of reflect back to the org chart, we only have four battalion chiefs allocated, and that's three in brand-new positions. We have six captains, five of which are brand-new, one is currently vacant. We have nine engineers, and three are in brand-new positions. That's 39.2% of the organization that's moved up into new positions, and 17.8% is of the five new firefighters. So that's 57% of our department is either brand-new or moved up. That's a lot in the midst of this last year, our last two years. We've been working towards, working on our fleet, as you've known and heard from me repeatedly, we are struggling in that area. We were able to get a 2019 Dodge Ram that replaced our 2008 Ford F-550. Council approved in June of 2020, the new Pierce Pumper, and that, I have a rendering of what ours looks like here in a future slide, and that is projected to arrive here in early July. I've actually seen preliminary pictures of it on the production line in raw metal form, so it's actually being built and moving forward. We were able to get numerous public outreach events done from, from the prevention side and the education side prior to the lockdown. Our fire marshal worked extensively to develop the fire fee schedule to really capture the time in motion and make sure that we were being fair in our recovery efforts, for the efforts done. We all, and also, I say, the fire prevention side of the house, it's really just one person. She was able to do over 500 building plan reviews and over 1,000 construction site inspections, along with the redebatement program, which you heard at the recent council meeting, with over 1,500 site visits. And then, as you have heard, also trying to adapt and adjust to the new needs of the cannabis industry, which are very, very complex, and we're definitely doing the best we can. We have a lot of opportunity for growth there. So the goals and needs, as we move forward, I go back to our mission, where we're always trying to serve the community the best we can. We have a lot of goals and a lot of needs for a small department. We have high expectations of ourselves. We're always striving to better the health and wellness of our personnel, develop those succession and training programs, as you've seen with the 39% movement in the organization, continuing to try to look and address our infrastructure needs, as well as seeking some improvements in the near future, of looking to a regional dispatch to work on closest resource from first responders, as well as emergency medical dispatching. Hoping to work again as we continue to address our fleet needs and work on a comprehensive vehicle replacement program with both fleet and finance, and continue to work on improving the prevention side of the house. There's a lot going on in our community, as you know, with only one fire marshal. It makes it challenging for us to get things out and meet the needs of our community because of the expansive workload. So we're really hopeful that in the future, we can see some growth in that area. I know we'll touch more on this, but you'll see in the CARES Act funding, the fire department is looking for the diesel extraction systems. You have heard from me at, at great length, and I apologize again, but this could not be one of the more critical things that we need in our department. As you all know, one of our personnel was diagnosed with colon cancer, that it was a work-related illness due to carcinogens from diesel exhaust, and this is much needed for our department. So we are very hopeful that with this funding, we will be able to see these arrive to the station quickly to protect our personnel. We are also in need of an aerial ladder truck. As you saw last month, our 29-year-old ladder truck was sent to the salvage yard. After further inspection, the torque box and several components of the structural members are delaminating, and it was completely unsafe and unrepairable. And we are also hopeful to get another Type 1 engine to make up for some of the deficiencies in that area, as well as a structural evaluation of Fire Station 51 to really figure out where we need to go. As I mentioned before, that photo in the bottom, that is the actual current rendering of our new fire truck. That is what it will look like with a little bit of a white top, it's kind of a tribute to the older tradition that we used to run on here in the city. And lastly, those needs that I had mentioned before when we looked at the org chart, these were our asks as a department into this budget, was for a fire inspector, position 1, 2, as well as an OSA. And again, while we have many needs, and we could definitely use more firefighters, I think our most critical component is trying to meet the needs of the economic growth in our community. We want to make sure that we do that in a safe and effective manner and be efficient in that process. I said I would be brief, so that concludes my presentation.
Does any of council have questions for the fire department before he steps away?
Should we get, because I know they're going to come back and probably talk about ARPA stuff, should we?
The ARPA will be a different discussion because with the new information that was released last week, that has completely changed the direction we may have to go with some of it. So this should be directly related to these budget requests that are not ARPA-related funding.
I have a couple of questions for you.
Okay.
Thank you. We're still sitting here, years after we probably should have done it, but the Primo Event system, can you elaborate on that? A lot of people, diesel extraction, how does it work? You pull in the engine?
Yeah, so the exhaust systems are, on the tailpipes of the fire apparatus, there's a magnetic device that the, when the crew is backing in, the firefighter steps out and attaches this hose that runs on a track system that runs into the station. There are vacuum systems that are placed on top of the building that run through a filtration system, and so it creates, it's a vacuum. So as the truck is running and the diesel particulates are expelled from the apparatus, it's sucked up into the filtration system and then released into the air and not into the living quarters of the station.
Assuming with your years of experience, you've been to other fire stations?
Correct.
Different areas. Is it standard to have that in the fire station?
Yeah, absolutely. We are the only county fire department that does not have them.
Okay. We're behind, folks, so we need to definitely take care of that. Just wanted you to be able to point that out. Can you talk a little bit more, because you've mentioned something about the, you know, people don't always connect the fire station with economic growth. There is a component, we talked about the fire marshal and, and some of those efforts. Can you talk about why that is an important component to economic growth and why we can't let that be throttled down in that area to get some of these businesses to the finish line?
Yeah, in the end, I mean, we have the California Building Code and the California Fire Code that we need to adhere to, and so there's the, the check and balance with, with plans that come in, or any other developments or modifications made, made to properties. It is always in our best interest to make sure that those buildings are as safe as possible. We don't want to have to come. So from an economic standpoint, we, we think of vitality, and we don't want the industry or, or any business to be compromised in their success because of, of a hazard. So the more prevention side that we're able to put into it and make sure that those significant events don't happen, we would like to do that. But as you've seen from the list, one fire marshal is significantly overwhelmed with the workload. I, I'm not quite sure how she gets done, what she gets done, but as we look to continue to grow and, and with some of the recent challenges just from the cannabis industry alone, it places a huge impact on her. And because of the training and the expertise that is required to be qualified to make those recommendations and final sign-offs, nobody else in the department has those qualifications.
Thank you. One last question, and I'm hoping you'll be as honest as you can.
Okay.
The world's seen a lot of changes over the last few years. People would say, oh, we'll never have that happen if the pandemic shows up. So anything can happen at any time.
Sure.
If we did happen to suffer a horrific California earthquake, how confident are you that that building doesn't come down?
It needs to be assessed.
Thank you.
Councilmember Codova.
Chief, you mentioned that right now only your fire marshal is able to do these types of inspections. That's the only person in your building doing that right now.
At, at that level, yes. So typical business inspections, the routine annual inspections that we are required to do, the company officers at the captain level can conduct those. This last year alone, we ran over 4,200 calls for service, which was a 3% increase for our fire department. Most agencies in the county saw a decrease during COVID, and we saw an increase. So with that, with the turnover, with the training, we, we, we don't have the time to get out. Our primary function is to respond to the 911 emergencies, and we're falling behind in that area. So when I see an opportunity to add an inspector, I see that as a help to the fire marshal for the business side, to make sure that we're moving with plan checks and reviews and inspections, but also to get out to our current businesses and make sure that they're being as safe as possible and help educate them where needed.
Understood. Thank you.
I would also think that, given how long we've had her, there is a time at which we will lose our inspector. And having somebody who is learning and training and understanding our community and able to make that transition is also important, given your strive to have a legacy plan?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, succession is a big deal for us, and it goes in all facets of the department. So there will be a time where, where she will no longer be here, and that, and, and great for her, but that will come at a detriment to our community. So succession is important, and if we can bring a lower-level person in that can learn from her and her experiences, and then have that succession built in, that's beneficial to us.
Thank you for that. Any other questions for fire? Thank you.
Lost my little list, my cheat sheet. Our next one will be community development.
Have my entourage with me. Honorable Mayor, council members, I'm Kristi Alarcon, your Community Development Director. The Community Development Department budget presentation is, the detailed copy is in your hands there tonight. So tonight, we want to be concise, we're respectful of time, and we know that you guys have a lot of others to hear from. So I thought it'd be best to have each divisional manager speak to their division's accomplishments and goals for the coming biennial cycle, as well as the needs that they have. So real quick overview, Community Development Department has changed a little bit recently. We are comprised of the Building Division, the Planning Division, what we call the Community Development Division, but it is truly so much more. It is CDBG, home, grants, affordable housing, and human services. It's just, you can't fit all that on a business card. And then, of course, our new addition, Parks, that has joined forces with the Recreation Division. So with that, I am going to hand it over to Eric Hagan, our Building and Safety Manager and our Building Official here at the city.
Oh, thank you. Honorable Mayor, honorable councilmen and women. It's nice to be here. I look at the numbers on the board. First of all, this is more or less our division. We have, myself is supervising the division. We have created two new positions. We consolidated three into two recently, and have a more combined job titles for them. We perform plan review, inspection services, administrative permit processing, neighborhood preservation. Program goals are there for you to see. And so we have had a busy, busy year with very small staff. And so here are some of accomplishments. We've issued over 1,180 building permits, over 3,900 inspections, a great percentage of those have been done by myself. Improved coordination with various city departments. We've established some timeframes that we didn't have before, and that's, I think, helping everybody get to the finish line on projects, plan checks, that kind of thing. And again, the consolidation of positions. Want to thank council for supporting that and voting for that. I think we're going to have a more talented, more diverse workforce with those positions, and I think we're going to be able to work continually together much better because we're going to do a lot of cross-training and know each other's doing. So, so with our goals and needs, staffing, of course, we've talked about, we need, we're getting that staffing, in fact, we filled one of our positions, and we're working on the second one. We're starting to get into electronic plan check as soon as we can. I'm really excited about that, and I know that it's going to create a much, much better service for our clientele, our applicants. Policy development, that takes time, we're moving in on that. And we've also done some fee studies recently and come up with some recommendations that I think will be landing, they're coming your way soon, and hopefully we get your support on those. So with that, we just, it's covered most of what I wanted to say. Just wanted to say that we're, I think we're making some progress in our division. I think it's been through a lot of upheaval, I think there's no secret anywhere to that effect, but I'm trying to stabilize this department and really create a customer focus and be able to help people through their projects, rather than just get the code compliance that we know we have to do by law, but also help them manage, get through, and get them in their homes or their businesses at the earliest possible time. So we thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Yours is the council. I'll try to go quickly here, I know there's a few here. The mission of the Planning Division is shown there on the screen. I just want to focus on the fact that we are trying to foster orderly growth here in the city of Lompoke. Some of the services, among many, maintaining the city's general plan, the zoning code, development review, the Planning Commission, as well as other, other things we do, other meetings that we attend, like City Council here tonight, environmental review, a lot of projects before they can even get to a meeting need to have environmental review, and of course, stormwater management as well. Looking at some of the goals here on our screen, improving the quality of life is essential. People, whoops, people want to live in Lompoke, and so we're constantly trying to promote the quality of life here. Also, customer-oriented services, even though we've been closed, we're constantly making appointments and meeting with people here, or via Zoom, et cetera. So providing that customer-oriented services is very important. And accountability and efficiency, when projects come in, we really try hard to move them along to either a commission meeting or whatever development meeting is required or that review that needs to occur before they apply for a billing permit. Looking off to the right, there's our team, myself, and, gosh, this is so tiny. You really can tell when you're getting old, you can't even like read some of the details on here. But we have a development assistant, two, we have Greg Stones as our principal planner, Sherida Weigle is our development assistant. In this budget, we are requesting desperately either an assistant or associate planner. We usually go out and recruit for an associate, and if we can't fill it with an associate, then we'll go to an assistant. We also have a part-time planner who has been helping, that used to be the young lady there, but she recently left, but we found someone to, to fill in, and then our environmental coordinator, which also does storm water. Real quickly, some of our accomplishments. There's a lot on the screen, I'm not going to talk about all of it, but there's quite a bit that we've been working on in the Planning Division. Some of the things that we've done is we've had 12 Development Review Board meetings, we've had 20 development projects that we've worked on, and we have worked on a total of 123 projects, including administrative approvals and, and other things, cannabis. We recently did the comprehensive- comprehensive update to the zoning code, which was implemented in 2020. We've also done some recent code text amendments in order to streamline some things, for example, for housing. The list goes on and on. We are working desperately to get our borders expanded with the Bailey Avenue annexation. And there's various reports that we're required to do and we recently, and I think the mayor was just in a meeting, for, we got a grant for, called the Sustainable Communities Grant. That's going to allow us to do some planning work for our major highways, to beautify and to accommodate pedestrians and bikes and things like that. Off to the far right, there's about fifteen projects there that are kind of the highlight of some of the things we were working on. The mayor recently talked about some of those projects at the state of the city. I just want to say that the project list that we route to the council, we have fifty-eight active projects on that list that you guys are looking at. And so a couple very exciting things is we are going to be working on in this budget cycle, a three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-square-foot production facility for the Central Coast Ag project. And as well as we're about to go to hearings here in a couple of months for the Mustang and the Liberty Organic projects, which would add about one-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand-square-feet of cannabis cultivation. So those are some big projects that are coming into town and we need staff to process these things. Some of our goals and our needs are listed there. I already mentioned how we are asking for one additional planner to help with some of these large projects that are coming in. In addition, a large project the planning division is tasked for, and I know the mayor is aware of this as well as the council, is our unit numbers are going up huge. Right now, we're at five-hundred-and-twenty-seven units. And because of the housing crisis, we're going to be required to plan and zone for approximately two-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-eight units. That will require updating our housing element and that's listed on one of our goals as well as a need to, to manage that project. Off to the right, just further expanding on some of the things that we do. And I want to add, because it's going to be a theme, the cannabis industry is keeping us very busy. We not only look at projects, but we review cannabis licenses, business tax certificates. We, I just went out the other day and did some inspections for new cannabis businesses. So we are very, very busy. And now with COVID getting better, opening up to the public, we will be very active as well at the counter. You also see on the screen there, the Burton Ranch project. They're, they're wanting to do some amendments to that project and that is also a, a big project for the city to add over four-hundred dwelling units eventually when they finish processing their amendments. So that concludes my presentation. Sorry, it was a little quick. If you have any questions about that, I could certainly answer those questions or we could move to the next department.
Councilmember Ball.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. So again, from this, remind us, you guys lost four full-time employees in the last budget cycle. Is that how that worked?
We did. Code enforcement was under the planning division, so we lost our code enforcement officer and then the supporting staff, like an office support staff. And then we also lost two planners, so we lost four staff members.
Awesome. And one last question. As a rough, rough percentage of your department's workload, how much of that goes towards the cannabis industry?
Uh, that's a real question, good question, councilmember Ball. I, I don't have that. I do know for the discretionary projects, there's probably, gosh, I would probably say about twenty percent of those are cannabis-related, but then there's the licensing and all the things that go with that. So I would say maybe about twenty to twenty-five percent. And, you know, we didn't ever increase our staff when the ordinance was passed and when business started picking up, we reduced our staff, as you noted.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cordova.
Brian, you mentioned that code enforcement was under the planning division before?
Correct.
So is it correct to say that the neighborhood preservation senior officer that is being proposed in the building division would then be code enforcement?
That's my understanding. Ms. Alarcon can expand on that, but it wouldn't be under planning specifically.
That, that's the plan at this moment.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I forgot to mention is that, that is going to go under, that person will go under me and so I'll be directing the code enforcement portion, but we will still be including zoning ordinance, planning-related complaints as well with Brian's input. So, you know, it's going to be a busy, a busy position.
Understood. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. My name is Chanelle Ovayé and I'm the Community Development Program Manager. Our division is made up of Myra Soto, Community Development Program Specialist and myself. I believe our director picked this picture of Myra and I because it shows how excited we are about what we do in our commission and our community. And we know the importance of it and the positive impact that it has. Our mission is to assist the most in need and provide suitable living in our community, ones that we can be proud of, through public services, facilities, and housing programs. We just recently added two new, and new elements to our division to research and coordinate applications for additional grant funding and the coordination of COVID emergency funding. The outcome of our work can be seen by the community as a whole and has directly benefited many Lompoc citizens and small businesses. Accomplishes, accomplishments made possible through this division during this budget cycle, to date are, we have paid five-hundred-and-seventy-nine past due monthly utility bills that benefited seven-hundred-and-sixteen individuals. We've provided home repairs for plumbing, heating, safety, and ADA access for homeowners throughout our community. We assisted thirty-three home, homes, we assisted thirty-three households. Some of them were veterans and homeless to obtain housing. Through our human service program, we have provided fair housing services, shelter, food, childcare, and counseling to low-income individuals and family, youth, seniors, homeless, veterans, mentally ill, and victims of violence, sexual abuse, and discrimination. We purchased and installed the new playground and exercise structure at Beatty Park. We did a business facade loan and we assisted twelve families purchase their first home in Lompoc with our in-house down payment loan program and grants for closing costs, which is not on this side. Here are some of the goals that are related to the council's goals. Our division is not proposing any needs at this time. We are here to defray the general fund impact and invest in our Lompoc citizens and neighborhoods. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I'm Mario Guerrero. I'm the Parks and Recreation Manager. And going through the slides, again, I won't read everything and I cannot see all the staff up there, but we have a, a pretty big team and we're, we're excited. But, but, but with our mission of what Parks and Recreation, but our overall goal is to provide safe, fun, and affordable programs and services for all ages and abilities and always adhere to the changing needs of our community. Parks and Recreation Division accomplishments in this past budget, it's been a, it's been a rocky past year, but one of our biggest accomplishments again is, was to provide services during these hectic times. And we were able to, to continue our passport program, which was very popular by appointments. And at our aquatic center, we, we, we were able to reopen for limited programming, lap swimming, as well as some limited learn-to-swim programs. One of the things then that we accomplished besides the ones up there were partnering with, with the county throughout the past year for, we hosted at the Anderson Center COVID-nineteen testing, as well as provided the Ryan Park for testing for the, the community. We had the, the monthly blood drives and also our big one was partnering with the Dick, at the Dick DeWee Center for a vaccine site. As well, a few new items up on the screen, Beatty Park, our inclusive, the playground, fitness equipment, and pavilion. It's been very, very popular. We've probably had about a year of, year or two of wear and tear on in the past of the, the three months, but it's been, it's been great to see the public out there. As well as our, the creation of the Lompoc outdoor, the, the community market. It's been real popular and a lot of the, the community out there. One, a couple, or one aspect is last week, we were sold out with vendors and currently as of today, we are sold out before this weekend as well. So it's been very popular. Parks and Recreation Division goals and needs. Well, one of our goals is for any new, brand-new Capital Park projects, we're going to incorporate security lighting and cameras to help ensure with the, the community's safety and also to, to keep these assets, the, the integrity of our assets. Also, to continue to seek the grant funding, we, we, we applied for three Prop-68 grants this, at the beginning of the year and we should hear October, the, the November and the fall if we're recipients. And those were the JM Pioneer and College Park. As well, we will continue to seek the, the grant funding. Also in the fall, there'll be a couple more Prop-68, the programs out there than that we will be able to apply for. Also, a goal was that the, the reorganization of Parks and Recreation, the, the division, which has already take place. Want to thank council for, for that. I think it's going to streamline all our efforts and to be able to provide more of an efficient operation. Some of our needs is, again, to, to continue with funding of part-time staff, that they're very valuable. It gives us a lot of flexibility in our operations to hit and address Parks and Recreation facility needs as they arise. One of the big ones then that we've, will continue to do is to engage and to collaborate with our youth sports organizations through, through town to help focus on things then that we cannot provide since we're low on funding as well as our staffing levels. But to accomplish this, being able to, to provide a funding line item of the supply money, so when these opportunities that, that do arise, we can engage with the youth sports organizations or nonprofits as well. A cur, few of those were Thompson Park, our bocce courts at the Anderson Center, and the resurfacing and painting of the tennis courts a couple of years back. So those are a few of our goals and needs and I'm here for, for any questions, but that concludes my part of the report.
Councilmember Cordova.
Mario, if you could answer for me, in where it says policy development, any new work capital will incorporate security, lighting, and surveillance cameras with, via Lompoc Police Department. Is that something that is being put in the budget for approval or is that something you guys are just asking and suggesting that we, that we?
Those will be built in for any capital projects. So any, any of the grants, those were put in for the Prop, the sixty-eight and any new capital projects that we're doing, renovations or anything, that, that we're going to try to incorporate that as funding.
But I'm speaking specifically about the lighting, because I know when I was at the Beatty Park ribbon cutting recently, one of the things that we discussed while we were there with some of your staff and yourself was the fact that the lighting, unfortunately, after a certain time, there's no lights at Beatty Park. And grant funds don't replace the lighting. They only replace the park funds.
Yeah, so currently, we do have funding through CDBG for our phase two. So after July one, we will be going out for the thirty poles out there for new poles and LED lighting as well as the other sandbox there. It'll be turning into another, the gazebo barbecue area.
Okay. And so that covers Beatty Park specifically. Will that grant funding also cover cameras that will go in there?
There, yes. There's all, already in process, the Fallen Warriors is putting up two cameras at the park and then we're, we're going to incorporate probably two more out there.
Okay. And what about then the other parks? Is there other parks that need, that have the same issue that need the lighting or that the cameras could also be considered? Or are they already being considered at every park?
Did they would?
So the policy development, it's not a project, it's not funding. It's a policy that every single time we get capital funds, it will be a requirement, much like we build into it, building permit, planning costs, all that stuff into our budget. A line item that will be required is security lighting and security cameras. So when we do that project, that it will be incorporated into it as part of the scope of work.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions for Parks and Rec?
Just a quick question. Now that we brought Parks and Recreation together, and I noticed there's not necessarily any, we're not talking about new positions per se, can you elaborate on any part-time staff that we're beefing up? I mean, the parks are starting to look better. How is that, how do you guys view part-time staff in this regard for parks?
Yeah, we are planning, well, we're in a big need that currently in recreation as well. During COVID, we had to furlough most of all our part-time staff. So recalling all the staff and trying to get all our facilities back open, programming, it's a little tough. So we're having a, a staffing workshop then tomorrow to try to, try to accomplish some of those goals. And as well, we utilize a lot of part-time staff in, in recreation. So we're going to look at this budget cycle, trying to incorporate some of the part-time staff as well in parks and kind of, kind of evaluate the, the operation. And we're not asking for any more staff in this budget, but trying to see what the operational needs are, get a maintenance plan and program in, in place and then kind of see where our needs are on that.
Thank you.
And Mario, one more question. When you talk about re-establishing your recreation part-time staff, a lot of that is dependent on your programs that you can plan, what the cost is for those, how much you can recoup that helps you cover those costs. So as you begin planning those, it isn't necessarily something that's put in the budget, but more your working budget based on your programs. Is that correct?
Yes. All our programs in recreation are based on the, the cost recovery level. So at, at minimum, we're covering the direct cost of the program and trying to recoup the part-time and full-time costs as well.
Okay. Thanks for that. Thank you.
So you've heard from my great management team here, who are the experts in each of those divisions. Overall, the community development department had some ask in the budget. We got all of those things. Dean was very generous. The one thing we did not get was the development services assistant in the building division. And that position had been requested in order to support the neighborhood preservation efforts. And I'll briefly describe to you what that person kind of does. They're the ones that, you know, you have your code enforcement officer, who we are now calling neighborhood preservation officer, goes out, does inspections, maybe makes phone calls, tries to get compliance. He's kind of the administrator person. And then you have his support clerical. He comes back with all of these notes, information that has to be entered into our track-it system, letters that need to go out. Then, you know, all of that is, happens with the DSA. And then the DSA is kind of like your person that's constantly at the desk, answering the calls because when people receive the letter and they're upset or they don't understand, they, they want to know how to become compliant, that person really is there to kind of walk them through the process and help them make voluntary compliance. In the past, our code enforcement was pretty successful at voluntary compliance. Since that went away, in the last budget cycle, we went to that form where people will submit the form. And it, it, I don't feel that that form provides that level of customer service. So I get complaints all the time about things that we, we cannot address, you know, trash on private property, things of that nature. So those have all been being forwarded over to our city attorney's office. And then the city attorney's office staff will send a letter or a notice. And it, it'll be challenging. And it, it'll be challenging. We're willing to take it on, but it'll be challenging for the neighborhood preservation officer on their own to, and maybe not as effective. They're going to be the person going out in the field, answering calls. So all the voicemails that have built, built up while they're out there. And then also write letters, respond to correspondence, things of that nature. So there could be some challenges with that. So I do want to be very clear, we can do it like this. But I want you to be aware that it's not going to be turning around the city because we threw a neighborhood preservation officer in the budget.
So for clarity, you're asking us as we go through the budget and we start to consider what we might change or add to consider this position to have a more effective preservation team?
Just more robust, it'll really help them.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just had a quick question.
Absolutely, Ms. Ball.
Just a quick kind of random question. And again, somebody is, a few people have introduced this idea and it's definitely piqued my curiosity. But in terms of the Building Department itself, big pile of work to do. The idea of self-certification on certain things, has that crossed your guys' radar? And how do you guys view, is there openness to that? Are there case studies? Is it anything?
So I'll let Eric speak to that because he has years and years of experience in various jurisdictions. And there are probably none that do that. It's come up before, we've kind of looked for it to try and find that. But Eric, can you speak to why we have not been in favor of self-certification?
Well, you're right. You're absolutely correct in that I don't know of any jurisdiction in our area. In fact, haven't heard of any in, in California that do self-certification on items. Even the simpler permits like a water heater change out. You know, they can self-certify, they put it into code. But if they really don't know code, then it's not much of a certification. So I go out and do water heater inspections. There's simple inspections, there's, you know, under 10 things you look for. But there are plenty of times there are corrections. So, and, and it's a life safety issue. Water heater can be a dangerous thing if it's not done properly. So we do one self-certification right now. And that is the state requires smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors. Just like with the sale of a home, they have to be in place. And so any, our law says that anything over a thousand dollars of valuation is required that we check to make sure that smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors are in place. So we, if we can't catch them at home or, you know, it's hard to catch people on those small inspections. Use the contractor. And there's a lot of times not enough time to go through the home and check everything for them. So, and a lot of times they're wrong, they're, they're not correct. So we ask, we use a self-certification for that to say, they say that they've installed those per a very simple code section. That's the only thing we can really do or use that for and, and assure that we're getting code compliance.
Thank you. It's a very interesting idea. I'm definitely looking for any place that's doing it successfully, but I appreciate your response. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for Community Development? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next department will be the Library.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, members of the public who are listening in from home. My name is Sarah Blile and I am the Library Director. So I'm going to give you a brief presentation. So the library's mission is to engage, enrich and empower our community. We provide library services not just to Lompoc, but to the entire Lompoc Valley. So this is Vandenberg Village, this is the base, this is Mission Hills. We have the library here in Lompoc and one in the village. So some of the services we provide to the public are access to the library's collections, both physical and electronic, computer and Wi-Fi access, research assistance for patrons. They can call, they can come in, they can go online and we'll help them find what they need. We provide classes and programs for all ages to, that help increase reading, improve academic achievement, assist with economic advancement, or enhance the quality of life. We also have early literacy programs for children. And we have adult literacy tutors that help residents of our community that struggle to read in English. Over the last two years, this is just a sampling of some of our accomplishments. We were able to replace the carpet at both the Lompoc and Village Libraries. The funding for the Lompoc Library came from the estate of a longtime library patron who passed away. The Village Library's carpet was paid for with county funds. We replaced the Village Library book drop. We completed a full inventory of all library collections. Partly with the closure, we were able to do something that hasn't been done in probably 40 years. It was amazing. We applied for and received a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars in grants, created a monthly newsletter. If you are interested in signing up, you can do that on our webpage. We reconfigured the library to promote distancing. Now that we are reopened partially, we have moved things around so that people are able to, can be distant from each other, excuse me. During this, the closure, we did establish a YouTube channel that has virtual programming, such as Storytimes and craft projects for all ages. We reorganized our website to include more information for parents who were helping their kids do schooling from home and also provided different activities for families to do. We adopted the Beanstack Tracker app so we could continue having reading challenges and virtual programming even though we weren't allowing people into the building. And we did add some outside security cameras at the Lompoc Library. We've had some break-ins and some vandalism. So we have several goals for the library. And a lot of this does fit right into the goals that the council has. One of our biggest ones is expanding the existing parking lot. It's the same size that it's been since the library was built in 1968. And our population has more than doubled since then. So we definitely could use that extra space. But in addition, adding a garage for the bookmobile. And that would enable us to remove the bushes and trees that encourage camping. And we've had several issues with that. It's hard to keep the foliage down enough to keep people from moving in. Some of the other programs that, that we have and that fit into different council goals, we keep, we do programming. We do a lot of programming and right now it's obviously a little bit different. But that does keep kids in the library and not roaming the streets when we're fully open. We have computers and other technology that can help people improve their opportunities for growth either, either, either personal or when they're starting a business, they do research at the library and we can assist them with that. That third one, we actually did just promote two people to fill current vacancies, but now we have their vacancies too filled. So if anybody out there is interested, we are hiring. So you have until tomorrow, please fill out an application. We'd love to have you. And then we'd like to work on redesigning the patio space for programming and patron use. Currently, this last week, we've had three different issues with people coming into that space and moving cameras, doing some other things. So we're, we're working on a redesign so that could maybe encourage people not to climb over those very climbable walls we have. Also, as far as financial goals and volunteer type things, we will continue to work with the county staff to evaluate the county library funding. As you know, the Village Library is paid a hundred percent through the county. The Lompoc Library is forty percent the county paying for it. And then the rest comes from donations and from the city. We'll continue to apply for grants. There's been a lot of opportunities and I think we've only been turned down once this year, which has been amazing. Grants do take a lot of time from staff, but the, the things that we can provide are, are definitely helpful. We'll continue to work with our library groups to raise funds for other enhancements. The Friends of the Library have, they help pay for programming. They're the ones that paid for the new book drop that's out at the village. We were able to use some of their funding for some new furniture in the library also. So we will continue to work with them. And then we do collaborate with local groups to provide volunteer services. Our tutors are all volunteers from the community. We have a lot of teens usually during the summer, maybe not this summer, but generally we do work a lot providing volunteer opportunities. So our needs are, there's several of them. Patio upgrade, I think I already spoke to that one. Trash enclosure, we have, we did have a dumpster fire, not 2020, but an actual dumpster fire at the library. So we did lose a couple of trash cans. We'd love to have it enclosed so that that's less of a target. We'd like to secure the basement access stairs. We did have a break-in a couple of months ago. Someone got in through the door down there. No damage was done and nothing, well, there was like $10 stolen out of our little snack fund. But we would like to discourage that from happening again. We'd need some new front entrance lighting for safety. And we'd like to have an, an AC unit installed, air conditioning unit installed for better ventilation options. That library was not built with the same standards that would be today when you build a building of that size and have that many people in it. And so we really, the ventilation is, is an issue in normal times. And now when people are more focused on it than ever with the pandemic, we would like to take this opportunity to do something for that. And then a couple of other things, just cost saving, LED lighting. A lot of the library has been upgraded, but there are still some areas that need it. And then the youth restrooms were not renovated. We didn't have the funding at the time. They are still original to the building. So we did a couple of years ago get the main restrooms taken care of. But there are still youth restrooms that are original 1968 fixtures. We think we can save some money and save some water if we had some new fixtures in there. So we, we'd like funding for those projects, obviously. And they are, most of them in the CIP or through the ARPA or CARES funding. And staffing, we, I did not ask for any extra staff this year, mainly because the pandemic really, really threw a curve for us. We had built up so high that we were so busy that I was really needing an extra librarian for teens, someone specifically just to work on teen programming, having a teen, I'm sorry, teen advisory board, excuse me. So that they have something that they're planning the programs. We've had great success with that in the past. So eventually, hopefully in the next three years, I'd love to have a teen services librarian. Teens can be destructive if you are not pointing their energy in the right direction. And this is one thing that has been proven to help in the neighborhood, especially for the kids. And also an outreach librarian. We do have the bookmobile and that is paid for a hundred percent from a trust, but she is really pushed to her limits. And we would love to add an extra librarian who could do outreach into the community. Currently, she is visiting the homeless shelter at the Bridge House. And she does a lot of programming at various areas around town. Kids that can't get to the library, but there is a need for even greater outreach to our Spanish-speaking population. So that is something that we would be interested in adding eventually too. Is there any questions for me?
Any questions? Thank you for pivoting and still providing amazing services to those of us that were homebound and those that needed assistance with teaching and entertaining kids at home. I know that it was a big change. But libraries across the US have really shown how important they are even during the pandemic. And, and you guys, thank your staff. You've, you've done an amazing job. And I constantly hear from people, when is it going to be fully open? I, I miss going in and spending time at the library. I will say, I know we aren't talking about the ARPA funding tonight, but that AC absolutely qualifies under the ARPA funding because of it being COVID-related issues with ventilation. So that might be something we can immediately look at down the road. Councilmember Ball.
Thank you. It was a great presentation. I just wanted to give a shout out to the library. Me personally, I lived about four blocks away from there when I was aged nine to when I left home at 20 or 21. So when I was younger, I do remember going in the kids section and checking things out and using those bathrooms. And those bathrooms were old when I was a kid. So I hope that we can find the focus to, to clean that up and fix that as soon as possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Our next department will be the Utilities.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. CJ Berry, Utility Director for the city. Tonight's presentation will touch on the five enterprise operations that comprise the, the utility department. And those five operations are unified behind the common goal of providing robust service that adds value to the community. Of that, we will go in order. I have with me each of the division managers. We have Mr. Sean Ryan presenting for water, Dr. Chan presenting for wastewater. I will present for electric, Mr. Rich Grasik for broadband, and Mr. Keith Quinlan for solid waste. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Ryan to get started.
Thank you so much. Honorable Mayor, esteemed council. My name is Sean Ryan. I am our Water Division Superintendent. I'll be going over our Water Division presentation tonight. So we are at full staff with a full composite of 27 employees within the Water Division. We currently only have one vacancy with our Water Resource Engineer. Our mission statement obviously is to produce, treat and distribute an adequate supply of safe drinking water for the citizens of Lompoc. On top of that, we want to foster a working environment with our customers and coworkers that furthers an atmosphere courtesy, integrity, safety and quality service provision. So for our services, we provide supervision and direction of all activities in the Water Division. This is protection of the city's water rights to groundwater and surface water recharge resources. We are responsible to promptly respond to customer questions and problems at all times. We provide customer assistance with water conservation and programs. We maintain over 135 miles of water mains, as well as our reservoirs, our valves, meters. Emergency repairs, we promote customer service and we read all water and electric meters. Administer the city's backflow and cross-connection control program. And we also provide outreach and education to the public on water environmental issues. So our major accomplishments for the last budget cycle, we were able to finally restore the third of our dewatering centrifuge units at our water treatment plant facility, which is giving us increased operational flexibility for our day-to-day demands. We also completed a major retrofit of our existing one-megawatt backup generator to support business continuity during loss of utility power. We were able to have a positive experience dealing with our rehabilitation of one of our hardest wells this year with well number five. We saw an increase in production from that well. And then we were also, we completed the annual environmental laboratory accreditation program, which is the ELAP. And on top of that, this year, we were also have, had, had to conform with the new international standards for the NILAC Institute. So our major objectives for this next budget cycle is to continue with our water distribution main replacement. This is an ongoing 100-year cycle to replace all 135 miles of our main lines in our system. We are going to be installing our new limeslaking system and continue to optimize plant operations for chemical treatment. We are going to continue to upgrade and improve our meter reporting capabilities, accuracy and efficiency of the radio and mechanical water meters to ensure proper billing and to assist with customer understanding of meter readings. We're continuing to support conservation activities consistent with regulatory and council policies. Establishing new financial reporting funds to better reflect sources and uses of designated activities. Such activities include our existing water retrofit resources and programs, vehicle replacement programs, renovation and replacement of infrastructure, and other programs not directly related to the operations of the water system. We are also moving forward to complete a needed security upgrade at our water treatment facility, our four reservoir sites and the Uplands Pumping Station. I'm here for any additional questions that you guys might have.
Councilmember Ball.
I have a quick one, since you're here. This will be easy, I promise. I was fortunate to be able to sneak in there and get a quick tour of the water treatment plant. Blew my mind, I had no idea. To, you know, you know how rumors can be and the community, sometimes they don't always know. I've heard things like, oh, I think that's, our water isn't that great. Or I've heard there's this or that in our water. You educated me about the quality of our water. I just wanted you to be able to give a shout out to the quality of water that we have in Lompoc.
Yes, we're very, very lucky that back in 1962, we had the forethought to. Yes, we're very, very lucky that back in 1962, we had the forethought to invest into a full conventional treatment system with a chemical softening plant. There's only probably two other facilities in the state that produce the level of treatment that we do for a groundwater system. So we do full conventional treatment, which is our chemical softening lime system, on top of filtration and disinfection as well. So we are very, very lucky at the, at the, at the quality of water that we are able to have with a groundwater system.
Thank you.
Any other questions for water? Thank you again.
Okay, good, good evening. My name is Dong Chan, the wastewater superintendent. Here is the wastewater division's presentation. First of all, the wastewater division provides supervision and direction of all activity of wastewater division, including but not limited to the operation, maintenance, collection, and laboratory department, and ensure compliance with regulatory requirement of the treatment process, provide the preventative maintenance and repair of the sewage collection system, develop, develop and administer comprehensive asset management program to protect late pay investment. The wastewater division's accomplishment is the, we expanded our polar party program, and we also held 2,477 tons of bio-solids to certify composting facility for the housing contractor certified scale, completed the contract with the Vandenberg Air Force Base to hold their bio-solids, and contracted to review and upgrade the plant supervisory control and data acquisition system to allow the access to system advanced management capabilities, enhanced plan physical security system by repairing perimeter fencing, installing CCTV camera system, and fire intrusion alarm service all monitored 24-hour a day, seven day or weeks, improve the final effluent structure, re-initiated and updated the pre-treatment program. The wastewater division's goal and needs is the, we need complete replacement of the Vandenberg Village Community Service District Transmission Line. And then we also need the identification of the new or more restrictive National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit requirement and implementation process change or system enhancement to meet the new or more restrictive MPDS permit requirement. And the institute a new computerized maintenance management system for the operation management, maintenance, collection, and laboratory departments. Improve the remote, the plan operation by a SCADA system through a dedicated remote laptop carried by the designated on-call operator as a replacement for the graveyard shift. Another we, we would like to do is the optimize the oxidation ditch process maintaining the proper dissolved oxygen set point is essential as both to low and to high oxygen level in the process function and efficiency. Plan and design, the decommissioning of the abandoned facility from the 1974 plant, replaced equipment in the effluent structure due to the predictive analysis indicating end of life. Improved headwork to optimize screening the debris and grit remover from low wastewater. Improved emergency holding basin for proper drainage and lining. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for wastewater? Thank you, and welcome. I, you know, I know you jumped into this, and you have a lot of work out there, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, council. CJ Berry again here to present on behalf of the Electric Division. I'd like to start just by reading the mission statement. And the mission of the Electric Utility Division is to provide safe and reliable electrical energy to the residents, businesses, and industries of Long Poak. Staff will also provide professional electrical engineering and construction services to other city departments and divisions and current and future commercial and residential customers to facilitate economic development and public safety goals. So with that, some of the services that we provide are the commercial residential electrical services, including design, construction, operation, and maintenance of the overhead and underground distribution system. That includes the 4KV, 12KV, and 115KV electrical infrastructure. We also engage in energy supply resource planning and procurement, as well as legislative and regulatory analysis, respond to electrical power quality issues and outages, engage in economic development consisting of the design and construction of new and expanded electrical facilities, maintain compliance with all regulatory agencies, and provide an energy conservation and energy efficiency services. Some major past accomplishments include the creation and implementation of a wildfire mitigation plan, completion of a cable replacement program to facilitate new development along Central Avenue, design and manage directional drilling to install looped systems, which allows us to increase electric system reliability, GPS mark and identify and catalog electric utility assets, upgrades and repairs to the SCADA control system. And again, the SCADA is the supervisory control and data acquisition system, annual testing and inspection of distribution automation switches, and the testing and inspection of the receiving station battery, battery system consistent with NERC requirements. Some of the objectives going forward are to recruit and retain qualified staff, restart the 4KV to 12KV conversion project. As you may recall, that's a project that's been lingering for quite some time, develop a comprehensive energy strategy for the city, develop an asset management program, and secure adequate long-term energy supply. Other objectives include the ongoing wildfire mitigation protocols, completion of all required general order 165 patrols, and development of a comprehensive system plan. At the receiving station, we'll be performing inspections of the receiving station's transformers and using that information to derive a potential end of life for the transformers. Some projects within the receiving station include the replacement of the 115KV bushings on the, on two of the transformers, replacement of three load tap changers, and replacement of nine 12KV vacuum breakers. Again, to visit some other major accomplishments, I apologize, Texas is just a little bit too small to read up there. In the receiving state, pardon me, in the Electric Division, we placed multiple 12KV pad-mounted rotary switches, designed and again managed drilling projects. I'm sorry, it appears we got a duplicate in here. I apologize for that. We'll just move on to this last slide, which shows some of the many performance metrics that we do measure and regulate against. And one of the, one of the keynotes and takeaway from this slide is I really do want to point out, and this is a commitment to a culture of safety, is no lost time injuries. That is an absolutely astounding record that this city should really be proud of. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Grasik unless the council has any questions for me.
Any questions regarding the Electrical Department? Again, welcome aboard. Thank you for jumping in and taking on the entire Utilities Division, but also the Electrical, and again, working with a very short staff. It is great to see the zero injuries given our limited staff through all of this, so.
Absolutely.
I congratulate you and the staff. So thank you.
Madam Mayor, city council members, my name is Richard Grasik. I am the Broadband Services Administrator. So I take care of basically three very, very distinct areas in the city. One of them is the broadband and the wireless services. The other is TAP-TV and the PEG radio station, and also the customer service for the meter readers and assisting utility billing. So in that, the services specifically, we get to public internet. We do the wide-area networking for all the city facilities, the phone system. So the landlines and any type of cell phone issues come directly through us. Utility billing support through the fixed network. So we take care of the assets that are out on the, in the street to provide the fixed network, the meter reading system. We do drone pilot and aerial photography services, alarm system connectivity and management, the facilities and street cameras recording for the network access. So we have bunches of cameras out there. I'll cover a little bit more on that. Three channels of public access and of course, a PEG radio station. So our program goals, very simple, keep everybody connected, keep everybody listening and watching, and keep everybody's utility bills accurate and timely. So our accomplishments over the past budget cycle, so we did the replacement of the TAP-TV master control system. We've installed over 160 cameras in the streets and in the city facilities. We integrated the landfill into the citywide camera system. They were originally on their own system that was just kind of like locked up there at the landfill itself. We did a backhaul from Thompson Park to the corporate yard. We got our FAA drone operator's license, purchased and implemented a generator for the PEG transmitter site. Had to do with the PSPS. We installed voice recording system for transit. Then we can keep on reading the annual maintenance on the H Street clock, integrated the KPEG directly to the EOC, upgraded the PBX, upgraded the fixed network to the 4G cellular data system. We implemented the newest Itron mobile radio gear, decommissioned the TAP-TV mobile studio van. We removed the Nighthawk electric meters so that basically they, once we get back into the regular billing cycle and shut offs, we'll be ready to reinstall those as needed. And we've installed over 2,500 100W water meter ERTs. And those are important because they give us a better read on the water data that's being billed. So essentially, instead of one read a day, this actually gives one read an hour. So we can really provide the customer service to let people know what is going on with their water usage if there is a question. So the major project that we're working on right now is the alarm system. I've heard a couple of comments about that. So we're trying to make sure that everything is working. Upgrade the data circuits coming into City Hall. And those, all our data circuits are provided through City Hall over our wide-area network. We're working on a new cell site at Ryan Park, recording and archiving video throughout all the city facilities and doing what we can to help utility billing with the transition to Tyler Munis. So our needs, of course, are to continue building our citywide fiber optic network ring. We've done a big portion of that, but we need to keep going on that. Implement a standby generator for the O Street Reservoir, because there's a lot more than just our network equipment up there now. It just continues to grow up there at the O Street Reservoir. We need a bucket truck for maintenance of all our network equipment, where we need to figure out how we're going to work to get that done. Mesh network update or decommission. We need some direction on how we're going to handle that. Climate-controlled enclosure for the PEG transmitter. So basically, we need some environmental control of the transmitter where it's located up on the hill. TAP-TV studio equipment upgrade. So basically, we've been able to do upgrades on a lot of the TAP-TV equipment. So now it's time, we're starting to move back towards the studio. And once a studio opens up and such, you know, we're ready for that upgrade as well. Replacement of one of the customer service work vehicles, and provide a solution for the turn-off electric meters, the remote turn-off electric meters, and continue replacement of the 100W water ERT in conjunction with the water meter personnel. And those are my three slides. So if there's any questions, be happy to answer. No, we'll pass it over to Keith.
Councilmember Vega.
Rich, you guys mentioned a bucket truck, and there's times when you have to change cameras out and move things. Is there a joint effort there between the Electrical Department right now, or are you guys self-sufficient?
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely. It's been working out really well right now.
Okay.
And it's more of a long-term thing that kind of comes along with the idea of what is the broadband division going to look like in the future, and what is going to be our level of service provision for broadband services throughout the community. So that'll come more into play. So we're trying to get a little bit ahead of the curve on that.
Okay. Is the broadband division kind of always, they always are going to be working with Electrical Division because of the way the cameras are hooked up? Is that correct? Or is it usually a broadband service? Or are you guys in charge of the maintenance, or is it going to be the electrical part of the maintenance?
It's, it is very much a hand-in-hand operation. We do depend on them because they do have the bucket trucks, and we need to get up there and do it. And we do, the level of training and safety that would be required for us to get up in the bucket truck is also pretty big. So that's one of those things that we also talk about, that it's like, yeah, how do we deal with that? You know, I mean, that's, that is a very, very big deal, you know? Being able to operate a bucket truck, it takes a lot of training and such.
So currently, do you have your own bucket truck, or you do not have one?
We do not.
Okay. So how would that change your level of service if you had your own bucket truck? And how would that kind of, would that have any changes in how you would work with electrical, or just allows you to do a few more things? Is that what that is?
It, it also allows us for quicker response times, too. I think that that would be the biggest thing. And as I mentioned earlier, too, is the whole thing about the mesh network. You know, there's a lot of work coming up in either replacing it and revamping the mesh network or decommissioning it. You know, just going out there and taking obsolete equipment off, you know, 250 light poles is a very, very big ask of work. So either way, it's going to be important. And also, it allows us to develop other parts of our network to be able to provide service to the public as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ball.
Just had a quick kind of general question. In terms of consumer internet access, the state, the feds are definitely pushing for broader and faster access. How are we generally looking at improving access or speeds?
We are seriously more in the vein of looking at partnerships, public-private partnerships, and being able to assist other providers however we can. We, we have facilities. We have assets out in the street. And being able to help somebody else utilize those assets is what our major contribution could be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Keith Quinlan with the solid waste division. I'm going to read the mission for the solid waste division. It's to provide the residential and business community of Lompoc with an integrated waste management system which will protect landfill capacity, conserve natural resources, promote effective management, waste management and recycling in a safe and cost-effective and environmentally friendly manner while providing exceptional customer service and facilitating economic development. The solid waste division is made up of trash collection, recycle, green waste collection, cardboard collection, large item, bulky item pickup, food waste recovery or organics, which is something new that we recently started. Currently, that's within the commercial sector or the business sector. We also provide street sweeping, landfill, and at the landfill, it's both trash and recycling. Household hazardous waste collection facility, those services are available to the residents and small businesses within the community. We have solid waste code enforcement, we provide public education and graffiti abatement. Some of the accomplishments for the current budget cycle include the landfill gas collection and control system, which is up and running and extracting the methane from the landfill and that methane is being flared off. Our diversion rate is estimated to be 66% recycling diversion. We are working on, in the current budget cycle, which will carry over to the next budget cycle, stormwater improvements for the landfill. And our trash tonnage was 40, 41,640 and we're estimating for the next fiscal year to be approximately 43,000 tons of trash taken into the landfill. Some of the objectives for the next budget is to improve the, continue to improve the imperants of the city. And one of those items will be alley cleanup. So we are going to be heading out into alleys and we're going to work this slowly around the perimeter of the city and work towards the center of the city. And as we do that, we're going to provide public education in those areas where we pick items up. So if, if an item were picked up behind a house and we can't tell which house, we'll leave that public information on there, with the residents, so they're aware of our free programs. We have a free bulky collection program, so if you have a couch, a mattress, a washer or dryer, you can call our office to have those items picked up at no charge. Residents can call three times a year and get two items picked up each time. We're going to continue to divert recyclable materials from the landfill. One of those fairly new programs that we're piloting right now is carpet recycling at the landfill. And we're going to continue to provide excellent customer service and work on our financial reserves. And then we're going to work on the improvements of broadband connectivity, both with having munis at the landfill and be able to accept credit cards at the landfill, which we have not been able to do for, well. That'll be a nice change.
At all.
A nice change at the landfill. And then the last thing is to comply with unfunded state mandates that we have coming down all the time, including 1826 and SB 1383. 1383 is going to be very onerous on our division. And that is why the request for the second item, a solid waste program technician, to help with the state regulations and program developments such as SB 1383. And I believe this concludes my presentation. And if you have any questions for solid waste, I'm available.
Mayor, if I may, real quick, just a trivia because it sort of, my mind went, wow. Do you recall how many mattresses you've been recycling either one year or since it began?
Yeah, since the program inception of the mattress, which happened in September of 2016, we have recycled or diverted from the landfill over 27,000 mattresses. So that's a lot of mattresses. We, that program has recently expanded and we're now taking the futon pads or mattresses as well. So we take mattress and box springs, futons, they're accepted at the landfill at no charge. People can bring them up. There are many other items also accepted at the landfill at no charge that we divert from disposal or burying in the landfill.
And then you also do a couple of times a year, large item pickup where they can phone and arrange or, and make sure that, you know, those get out if they can't bring them out themselves as well.
That is correct. We do what's called a bulky item or a large item pickup. And that could be refrigerators, washers and dryers, couches, bookshelves, mattresses and box spring, as I mentioned. Large items that can't go in your container, customers can call us three times a year and we'll pick up two items each time. The program right now is about three to four weeks out due to the interest in the program.
Great, and we really appreciate that because that does help reduce unwanted abandonment in alleyways and other locations or as you get the phone calls from many of us saying, I just passed a mattress laying on, you know, X, Y and Z road. So some of those unfunded that you were talking about, I know that we have a lot of unfunded mandates coming down that are regarding food waste and those new programs. Where, where are those looking to come in and affect our budget cycle? I know that they've extended it as a result of the pandemic, so.
Yeah, I believe that there are bills at the state level currently to actually expand further
Great.
Or provide additional time for implementation. Right now, SB 1383, I believe, is slated to go into effect January 1 of next year. And that includes expansion of organics or food waste collection to the residential sector. Also diversion of edible food materials. So it's going to have its challenge. In addition, there's a procurement within there that jurisdictions have to purchase X amount of compost to help with these programs.
Exactly, and I've been monitoring these because I realize it would be an additional impact. It's an additional collection, it's additional bins, it's additional services, and you're right, they're unfunded. They're just, they're mandates. And so I'd seen the initial extension and I'm, I have written in support of extending it again because it's going to impact not just our community, but many communities. And, and I get the mission, but without it being funded, it's really difficult to implement and a burden on us to try and, and carry that. So thank you.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Councilmember Vega.
Yeah, Mr. Quinlan, this is a budget, you know, meeting, but while I have you here, can you give me a scenario since we're all pretty concerned with cleanup? And I can tell you that every time I've approached the solid waste division and out the landfill, they've been more than cordial and decent, so I can tell you that my personal experience has been really good. But I have a scenario here that we have people that have large items that are being dumped in these alleys. Can you give me a scenario of, of a fear factor from a homeowner who could call and say, hey, someone dumped a couch in the alley right next to my yard? You're going to get sighted, or you're going to do this or do that. Maybe you could kind of give me a scenario on how that could be alleviated without, let's just say it wasn't that person, but someone did call. How would that be handled from your division?
There's a couple of ways. If someone dumps a couch between, behind your property in the alley, you become the proud new owner of that couch out there in the alley. It's an unfortunate thing and we have code enforcement that will look into it. We, the bulky program is an option for the homeowner to get rid of those items. That's one option. Another option would be to drive it to the landfill, but that's an expense for the individual depending on the item. So if it were mattresses or a television, those items are free. But if it's a couch, then there's a, there's a charge for that. So the bulky item is one avenue to take care of that. In addition to the bulky program, we do have a special hall program that allows residents that have more than the two items to, say they have half a dozen items, they can schedule with us. There is a fee for the service, but we'll pick those, we'll schedule and pick up those items and charge the utility account.
Thank you. There's a couple of situations here that I think it's nice that we clarify because, you know, so you have a, let's just say it's a mattress and it goes, gets pushed all the way up back and forth in an alley, okay? So you, you said they own it, but there's going to be different owners under that scenario. So you hate to see it where it's just the couch or the mattress just pushed in the middle of the street and nobody. But, but you have explained what the, the process, okay? It's just, I don't know that we have an answer for someone that's just going to push something all the way up and down. You know, it's not your problem, but I was just wondering how the reporting process would work, you know, for a situation like that? Because, you know, we just want it cleaned up, you know? So it's not your problem, but the reporting part of it would be nice to just get clarified there, so thank you.
Yes, you got it. And, and if that mattress were back there, our code enforcement would inform the property owner via letter and let them know they could take care of it. They in turn could call and then they would be provided the options for disposing of that or the handling of that.
And I think, I think, you know, clarifying the single-family residents versus the high-density areas, you know, that's probably a whole different situation, right? I mean.
That is correct.
There's some abuses there when people move out or they get evicted and I think they just leave everything there and so, thanks for clarifying.
You got it, and we work with the multifamily dwellings as well and have programs for those high-density areas as well.
So I'd just like to give a shout out to the landfill and the solid waste person, Mr. Solis also. They have been more than cordial and have stepped up to the plate, so thank you.
Thank you, councilmember.
Any other questions for solid waste or for the utilities? Any closing remarks, Mr. Berry?
Yeah, thank you for the chance to present tonight. Again, I just want to reiterate our overarching goal is to continue to provide that robust service that brings value to the community. And I think by the generous comments from council tonight, it's been reflected that our, our staff is top-notch. They really put in maximum effort all the time and I'm really appreciative of that.
Thank you. Councilmember Vega, did you have?
Yeah, I have one more comment for the utility director. There has been some news out here that says you've had some success stories in attracting other people and maybe some new applicants here. Just wondering if you wanted, you know, it's a shout out to you guys if that's really happening, okay?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I wasn't prepared to bring that up this evening, but thanks for, for posing that question. So that is true. We, we have recently been able to recruit and fill the electric utility manager position with a very long-term veteran employee, 35-year veteran employee, so I'm very excited to get that individual on board. He comes from a, a very vertical and large utility, one of the largest municipalities in the state of California. So really looking forward to getting him and his skillset on board and helping to run the daily operations of the electric utility. With that, we have the benefit of, of this individual also reaching into his personal network and helping us recruit some qualified, experienced journeyman linemen as well as apprentices to fill those very critical positions.
That's excellent, and just hearing about other divisions here with a succession plan and hopefully, I think you're, that's what you're looking at also. Not waiting till everybody's ready to retire to do some cross-training, so thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We have, we're up to public works.
If I can hang on to anything here.
You're doing just fine.
I can't see anybody anymore, so I think I have to. I can't read anything.
He's still having it in use to the fog-up glasses.
All right, there we go. Good evening, council mayor. My name is Mike Luther, I'm the public works director. Here before you is the public works division or department's org chart. It represents 56 proposed positions, which are actually existing positions. There's no new positions proposed in, in the new budget. There's actually a reduction of seven, which I'll explain later. But the public works department is six unique divisions. We have fleet and facilities maintenance, urban forestry, airport, transportation, engineering and street maintenance. So here's the engineering division. Just got to keep one hand on that one. But, so engineering, as you can see here, they, they provide capital improvement project management for the most part. They do right-of-way inspection for encroachment permits. They manage infrastructure projects, they do a lot of agency coordination. They procure grants for street projects primarily. We do a lot of design and construction management for the utility divisions. We actually had a bid opening this week for the wastewater division for one of their projects. I'm going to go a little quick since I have so many divisions and I know it's getting, starting to get late already and there's a lot to cover. So I'll read all the mission statements. But there's currently three vacancies in the engineering division. I think there's only two represented here, but we have one coming up on Thursday. Our principal civil engineer actually resigned. His last day will be next week, so I will have three vacancies in engineering. Some of the accomplishments I mentioned is they do a lot of project management. They oversaw over 20 capital improvement projects, administered their programs, their funding. We have acquired several grants. We finished the three individual street projects. They're just kind of laid out that way. You know, we did a patching project, a concrete project and the overlay project, all related to the same, same streets. And we do a lot of coordination with meetings such with SB CAG and other agencies. So our goals are to, the safety and preservation of the public right-of-way. So, you know, one of the major goals is to prevent loss management, you know, through replacement of worn-out infrastructure such as sidewalks, curb scudders, potholes, worn streets. You know, so the project here on the bottom represents the prevention of bank loss along the river. And that's one we completed this year. The project on, on the top picture there is, it's kind of hard to tell what it is here, but that's the removal of the old pool. I think I went the wrong direction here. Oh, street maintenance, I'm sorry, I was on engineering. My bad. So street maintenance is, is basically the day-to-day maintenance of our city street in, in the right-of-way. They do pavement maintenance such as, they do the minor maintenance, they don't do the major maintenance, they do like the bottle holing. There's a, a piece of sidewalk that's lifted that they can replace. They don't do the capital project-type improvements. They do traffic control for special events. They do all of the street sign and street pavement marking every year. And they do the storm drain inspections and they handle a contractor to clean out all the catch basins every year. So when I talked about the, the overall org chart originally, this is where the seven positions are being removed, right there, the ones up in the upper right. Those are actually currently vacant positions, we're not eliminating anybody's job. These are ones that have been held vacant for three-plus budgets. These are ones that have been held vacant for three-plus budgets cycles. It's just a step to right-size our maintenance crews to where we can balance what we have available with road funds and still do capital projects. And even with those seven being eliminated, we still have three vacancies that we are currently recruiting for. Some of their accomplishments, they've, you know, maintained the 15,000-plus sign inventory. They do restripe the entire city every two-year cycle. They've patched over 112,000 square feet of pavement over those two years. In the first year, they managed 12 special events. We didn't have any special events this last year due to COVID, but we did have 12 prior to that. And they provide support for emergency services. We've had seven or 11 call-outs to assist police or fire over that cycle. So I just tried to tie some of their functions to the council goals. So obviously to ensure safety, they, they assist everything with public safety, everything they do, you know, making sure that the streets are accessible for police and fire and the public during an emergency. And through financial plan, you know, we, we're trying to right-size our crews to maximize the available funds that we have for roads. And that's kind of the, the needs there is to, to kind of remove those seven positions that we haven't filled. It just helps on the overall allocation of the budget. We're not getting charged for services we're not using because we have additional staff budgeted. Urban Forestry, they maintain all of the city street trees and they also do electrical line clearing for the electric division. They do stop removals. They do some right-of-way hardscape maintenance in the downtown area and the medians. They do some pesticide application on trees and other areas. And they maintain the vegetation along the East-West Channel right-of-way and the Allen Hancock Bike Path. So some of their accomplishments the last four years, they implemented year four and five of the high maintenance tree removal and replacement plan. They planted 10 of the previously removed stone pine trees, which brings them up to the original 60 trees. They've implemented the electric utility division's wildlife mitigation standards for the areas they're responsible for trimming. They held through the beautification commission, the holiday light and decoration contest. They recertified all their tree chammers. And they've drastically helped reduce the amount of electrical outages due to vegetation. So some of their goals are to implement year six and seven of the high maintenance tree removal plan, perform a three-year inspection of the stone pines on South H Street and implement any recommendations that that report deals. So I kind of combined these, these two divisions together. They're interrelated, it's the same staff, but they, they do have separate funding and, and separate goals. So the city has a, a full municipal airport. So there, they provide hangars for tenants, they provide opportunities for aviation-related businesses to locate there. They provide fuel for aircraft. They, they coordinate several special events, Toys for Tots, there's the Piper Cub Play-In. They work with the safety crews to provide training opportunities when it's available there. I know fire and police both occasionally use the, the facility. And during emergencies, they provide a place for like Santa Barbara County Fire, Cal Fire to, to have their headquarters during those special events. So transit is our cult system. They provide fixed route and ADA service for the city, Vandenberg Village, Mission Hills. And we also provide shuttle service to Santa Barbara twice a week. And we have a route that goes to Beulton three times a day. And then we also partner with Santa Maria and the county of Santa Barbara to provide the Breeze 100 service. So I covered some of these already, but, so some of their accomplishments is we, we did a, some pavement repair projects out there. And we're currently in a design project to replace the lighting at the airport. Some of the accomplishments were transit. We replaced seven, seven buses this past budget cycle and, and one ADA van. And we executed a two-year extension with our service provider. And we've received several grants for some solar panels out at the proposed or planned new transit facility on D Street. So some of the things that fall into the council goals is obviously providing a potential training facility for our first responders out at the airport. They have lots of land. It's a nice wide open area for some of the activities that they need to do. And as far as sustainable financial plan, the airport, obviously we seek as much FTA and state airport grant funding as we can get. And typically when we are successful, it provides for 95% of the project funding. And it's kind of the same thing for transit. We provide a safe way for residents to get around town. And we, it's 100% funded through FTA, TDA funding. It's, there's no general fund in transit at all. So we have facility maintenance. This is a very important division, but it's rather small. It, it basically consists of three maintenance workers and six custodians. They provide custodial services to City Hall, PD, Library, Corporate Yard. And then basically the three maintenance facility personnel provide anything and everything related to maintenance to any, all the city facilities from sewer lines up to the roof. So the primary goal is to maintain the city facilities, assets, and provide a safe and comfortable working environment. And provide sources, needs, services for well-qualified and capable staff or outside contractors to quickly and most effectively complete those things. So it is, it is a difficult task when we have, as we know, our facilities are aging and limited budget for the last several bud, cycles. But they did have some accomplishments. Like Sarah mentioned, they, they were involved in the carpet install at the library. They were involved with cabling and other items to assist with interior and exterior cameras at City Hall, skylight repairs, AC system repairs. Helped finance secure their safe room. Corporate Yard, they've done several security upgrades to key locks and gate access and personnel IDs. They've done LED lighting upgrades in several of the, the bays. They worked at the police department. They were able to install the HVAC system and do some security upgrades on their windows, replace the front door. And police and fire both had a sewer issue, which they were able to emergency repair and they're still working on other long-term solutions. So some of the goals for the division are to continue with the LED parking light improvements here at City Hall and lobby remodel with security cameras and barrier for the front counter. To continue with some more HVAC upgrades at the jail, at the PD. And citywide, like Rich mentioned, we're, we're all working together on a solution for our fire and security alarms issues. And then, like everybody else, we're, we're struggling with the long-term maintenance and replacement of all our facilities. So that's the, the goal there. And then fleet maintenance. Fleet, fleet has a very large task. They basically affect everybody in the city. They maintain probably, I say 375 vehicles here, it's probably getting closer to 400. But a lot of the fleet is aging. We have been able to replace quite a few, but there, there are still a lot, a lot of old ones. And as, as the vehicles get older, they get more costly to repair. So that's, that's their biggest challenge. They also do 90-day commercial inspections for every vehicle that requires a commercial license. They do 45-day transit inspections. They keep all the records. They coordinate with all of those regulatory agencies that are listed there towards the bottom of the page, too numerous to mention. And they, they do assist with accident reporting and investigation. We currently have three vacancies in fleet. We recently lost our OSA, but was replaced with an OSA from another one of my divisions. So that one's down instead. But we lost the maintenance supervisor and we're down a mechanic as well. So some of their accomplishments, they completed almost 2,600 work orders this past budget. They, they purchased some new equipment to help fabricate some of the brackets and, and things that we just can't buy for some of these older vehicles anymore. They're just not available. We have to either have somebody make them or we have to make them ourselves. We've acquired 39 replacement vehicles, including the seven buses, three refuge side loaders, four police cruisers, and in the process of assisting with the fire engine. And then they've repurposed some other vehicles to other divisions as the, you know, so say we replaced a pickup in a utility division, but the pickup's still good or useful for, you know, another division that has a lighter use. You know, we don't, we don't just dispose of it, we repurpose it to somewhere else. So some of the things that they've, they've done is we're, we're really working on our parts inventory and our work order system to where we can really track and, and anticipate needed parts and accurately track where they're going and who should be paying for those. That was, that's a big accomplishment. It's still in the works, but it's getting much better. We've, working on replacing vehicles on a priority basis. So here's some of the vehicles that were replaced. There's the PD Cruiser, there's one of the side loaders, and I think that's a vac truck. So that's, that's the, the big need. It's not really an, an ask in the budget, but obviously if there's any available funds, the deferred maintenance and replacement of a lot of our fleet is, is really putting a drain on the mechanics. And even the availability of parts, parts are getting increasingly hard to get, even for normal parts such as oil filters during COVID. It's, it's crazy how, how hard parts are getting. So that was the departments, but this, this is what we had in the, the draft CARES Act request. We had some, just some needed repairs at the corporate yard for rain gutters and roofs, some extra needed deferred maintenance at PD. And then there's the, the fleet item I was talking about. You know, there's, there's currently 20-plus general-funded city fleet vehicles that are beyond their anticipated replacement time. So anything there would help. And then the last two items, those are kind of preliminary numbers. We've, we had to put these together pretty quickly and I believe that those are way underestimated. I'm, I'm sorry for that, but, so just keep it in mind, we do, we do have a dire need like police and fire for radio upgrades, but there's other city divisions and every, basically everybody in the field in the city has a radio in their car, they have handhelds. And they all, they all work on the same repeater system. We don't use the exact same equipment for everything, but they do share equipment. And there is a, a desperate need to upgrade the radio system. It's, a lot of the components are 30-plus years old. That concludes my overview. Do you have any questions?
That's a lot. Any questions for Mr. Luther? Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mike. We're going to move now on to police. And that'll be followed by Dean in Finance.
And that was my fear. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I was hoping I could read it from here and even with these glasses, I cannot read it. They forget my age sometimes. Anyway, now I'm fogging up, which makes it even more difficult. So that's our department organizational chart. And if you look up there, those reds blocks are vacancies. And they come from either patrol officers, dispatch, one in the jail, and the one in records. And I can't see the other two now, but I, I believe they also have to do with community services from what I can see. So here's our mission statement. It says, "The mission of the Lompoc Police Department is to provide effective and professional police services in partnership with the citizens we serve, encouraging mutual respect and innovative problem-solving, thereby improving the quality of life in our community." So these are some of the services that we provide. And we deal basically with quality of life issues, non-emergency as well as emergency issues. We also conduct criminal investigations to meet the requirements of the Department of Justice. And some of the primary types of investigations are up there, homicides, vehicle thefts, traffic enforcement, school resource officer. We used to do narcotics and gang investigations. Accident investigations now are relegated to all patrol officers instead of having a traffic unit. We do sexual assault investigations, crimes against children, robbery investigations, property crime, crimes to include burglaries and thefts, juvenile offenses, domestic violence, and aggravated assaults. And it says there, "We provide dispatch services for police, fire, and other city departments. We also do vehicle abatement, graffiti, and emergency services to both natural and man-made disasters." It's also our hope that we will have some form of cannabis compliance and enforcement. When a cannabis enforcement compliance detail is fully implemented, as it says there, it will provide oversight and accountability of the cannabis industry and ongoing training for new and established businesses. And I just want to add that there's been a lot of discussion lately about the Bureau of Cannabis Control. And as it stands right now, they are basically an administrative bureau. They do no enforcement action as of yet. And in the two and a half, three years that we've had cannabis in the city, we have not had a visit from the Bureau of Cannabis Control. So any, any issue dealing with people being out of compliance, that is deferred to the local agencies. And that's been their message as well when we've contacted them. Dispatch. So here's a breakdown of the calls that we have. And on average, we do about 90,000-plus calls a year. A lot of those calls are administrative, but as you can see there, there's 16,802 911 calls, police events, which includes enviews and other generated by our officers. There's another 28- There's another 28,000, and the 5,000 there and change is officer-initiated. Moving on to the next slide, here's our jail. We have a type-two jail. And basically, we can house many of our arrestees. However, if there are some aggravated circumstances or special needs, those arrestees have to be transported to Galleta, 54 miles away, to the sheriff's jail. So that's a big challenge for us, too, at times. But we also provide custody for not only LPD or Lompoc arrestees, we also do it for the Santa Barbara Sheriff's Office, Santa Maria Police Department, the California Highway Patrol in Guadalupe, and on occasion, some state and federal agencies. So if you look at the number there, you can see our bookings, and you go down to 2020, there's an asterisk there, if you see, it's 1,095. And you can see that our jail bookings drastically were reduced, and that has to do with the zero bail policy that the state enacted, the state judicial council, as well as a real redefinition and some conditions that were changed on people that we could hold in custody. But what that number doesn't say there, and it's down there at the asterisk, is that we did an additional 800 arrests, but they were site-released. That means we didn't hold them in custody. Next slide, please. Property and evidence. And it's quite impressive to me that a department our size, we currently house over 40,000 items that is managed by one property officer in our property room. And that includes a variety of different types of evidence from criminal evidence, as well as narcotics, as well as DNA evidence that we store here as well, too. Next slide. Records unit. So the department staff's a records unit, and this unit provides records management, provides reports. It responds to the district attorney's office when they have discovery or they need evidence or reports that need to be submitted to them for prosecution. Along with that, we also have a growing number of PRAs as a result of the change of laws, Public Records Act requests. And this year, we started the process of doing some redaction because we've had a lot of requests for video evidence or things that we keep in our system, so we've been able to do that. But we had one person, and we lost that person, but we're in the process of training someone else to do that redaction because it's very time-consuming, and I've given a prior demonstration or talk about that as to what that entails. We are also involved in the transition from uniform crime reporting to the National Information-Based Reporting System, as well as the California Information-Based Reporting System, which is also going to have an impact and an effect on our crime stats, because there's new elements that need to be captured. So that's one of the reasons I didn't adjust the performance measures that are crime-based for this report, because that's subject to change, and we have yet to see what that's going to look like until those systems are fully implemented. Next slide, please. Crime in Lompoc. Call for services, as I mentioned before, was 28,476 last year. Year-to-date, we're 8,456. Officer-initiated activities last year were 5,500. This year, a little over 2,000. Reports, a little over 12,000 last year. We're right around 3,500 year-to-date. Arrest, last year, 1,224, and then 436 year-to-date. Traffic collisions, we're 229 for last year, 80 for this year, and then traffic stops, 1047 last year and 733 this year. Citations, 881 and 491 for this year. When you look at those numbers, a little bit misleading, because we've been pretty proactive, and some of that stems from the fact that we've had to have special overtime details that are funded through the Office of Traffic Safety grant that we receive every year, and that's how we fund those operations. But really, if we had a traffic unit, we could even do some more selective enforcement, and there is a need for that. Next slide. Objectives and goals. These are some of our primary objectives here. First of all is recruitment and hiring. We're at 39. We're authorized to go to 47. We expect one trainee to graduate from the academy in June, June 9th, and we have three new hires, but they're going to be trainees, and they won't start the academy until second week in July. So we're optimistic about that. We also need to fill some other job classifications. Right now, I'm down to two jailers, and we are down two jailers, so we need to do that as quickly as possible, and we're working diligently towards that end. Records techs, we're down one. We are in the process of implementing the Special Investigation Unit, which will deal with a variety of emerging crime issues. That could be gang, it could be narcotics, it could be any specific need that we have that needs selective enforcement. And we have, we hope to have that underway by June, mid-June at least. And then, of course, community service officers, we're down to one. We lost one, but we also gained her in a sense because she transitioned from CSO to police officer, and that's a good thing, too. As I mentioned before, we want to create the Special Investigations Unit. We want to restore proactive and community outreach units. And most importantly is that we need to reestablish someone to deal with the quality of life issues related with homelessness, as well as community services. I mean, we're in dire need of that. I mean, the pandemic is one thing, but we need to engage the community more than we've done, especially if we really want to fulfill our mission to its fullest, and we're not doing that. We haven't been able to do that for some time. We were relegated to the two primary functions. We have to make every effort to address traffic accidents and fatalities. We lose a lot of people every year because of that, and we have a high number of accidents. You know, one of the things when I became chief is, and I wanted to do, and I withheld filling a captain's position, almost to my detriment and that of my new captain as well, is that we've been trying to function, and we've done a pretty good job, but the hope was that we were going to transition, hopefully include two lieutenants, and that's anticipated in this next budget cycle, hopefully. And why is that important? We need to have a viable, sustainable succession plan. And as I've mentioned before, good organizations, they get it done. Great organizations sustain themselves. And historically, we've had to go out, you know, yours truly, and recruit people to come here for those management positions. And we are to the point now where we should be developing internally. Not only that, it's also a good retention incentive because it makes people want to stay with the organization if they know that they have the ability to promote and work in another capacity. Next slide, please. So our budget history, those are our budgets for the last four budget cycles, has our proposed budget for these next two years. Our numbers up there are 39, and actually civilian is 18. That was a mistake there. We need to fill at least four civilian positions, which will bring us up to 22. As I mentioned before, our goal is to get up to 47, our authorized strength. Next slide, please. Department critical needs. So, you know, I hate to put these in an order of priority, because every one of those things that I'm requesting up there are essential. There's a dire need, and there's a call from the public throughout the nation, for officers, all officers, to wear body-worn cameras. And so I've put that up there. And as I've mentioned before, it's not just the purchase of the equipment we have to be concerned about, it's also the personnel that we need to manage all that video and to provide discovery and PRA requests. So that's why you have a personnel component to that, to that purchase as well. Vehicles. And Mike alluded to this, too, in his presentation, that our fleet is in dire need of replacement. Probably 80% of our cars are beyond, are extended beyond their life cycle. And these are cars that are driven around the clock, so we wear them out. Yeah, we got four new cars last year, but we've been using them like crazy because they're the better cars and the most reliable and dependable. We had to decommission two vehicles, a detective unit and our SWAT support vehicle, because, you know, as it was put there, it could put officers' lives in peril. Those were unsafe vehicles, so we did away with those. Radios and dispatch upgrade, we need that. There's the cost for that. Mike alluded to that, too. It's quite expensive, and we need to have a better system. It's crucial to our operation. Our radios are 30 years old. And I went to a vendors' conference just before the pandemic, and I mentioned to our current vendor who was doing the presentation, and he said, "Hey, what model radio do you have?" And I shared that with him, and he started to chuckle. He goes, "How do you find parts for that?" He goes, "You'd probably go on eBay to get them." And the truth was, we had a long-term radio technician at the time who was pretty proficient at going on and somehow getting some of these salvage parts to keep us going. But we also need the infrastructure upgraded, too. And lastly, computer-aided dispatch system. That's our computer system that links all of our functions, from bookings to property to dispatch to records. It's all tied in, and our current system is about 20 years old. It needs to be replaced, especially now that we're going to nibers and cybers as well. Next one. Personnel accomplishments. You know, when the pandemic hit us, we were the first to enact some safety protocols, and we were on a vicious pursuit of getting protective equipment. We closed our lobby, we redefined our work practices and the methods of engagement within the building. We've also been very successful in filling all but one of our nine dispatcher positions, and that's the first time in six years. And not only that, the people that we now have working dispatch, we have four bilingual, Spanish-speaking dispatchers. That's never happened before here. So that's a big plus, too. We hired eight police officers, six successfully graduated at the police academy, two have completed the FTO program, but I'm happy to say the three that show there is currently, last week came off of FTO, and they're now, they can work independent, so they're off of FTO, too, the field training program. And we have one that's in the academy, and he's just weeks away, and we're hopeful and optimistic that he's going to graduate, and he'll be joining our ranks here very soon. Next. We hired one community service officer in the last year. We promoted one sergeant. We've been running one sergeant vacancy for over a year, one captain's vacancy for a year and a half. We promoted two corporals. We have a corporal vacancy right now, and we promoted, in other words, we basically hired five new officers during that period. Next. We solved one homicide investigation, and that's a significant accomplishment for last year. We have three that are near getting to the point where we hope to proceed to have those solved and hopefully get them into the realm of prosecution. We recovered 210 stolen vehicles. We participated in two mutual aid operations with field force operations in San Francisco and Los Angeles as a result of civil unrest. And that was something that was very new to us. I brought about some training, and based upon my experience, we were able to get people familiar with a mobilization plan and how to address those kind of issues, and not only for civil unrest, but in the case that we have a natural disaster as well. We implemented a new automation program. It's called IA Pro, and this is where we automate our complaint system to track it and to be able to report accurately, as well to the Department of Justice, as well as a system that allows us to do an automated investigation on uses of forces and pursuits. And that's really important, because these are three areas that are always subject to risk, and it's essential that we do risk management in these areas. We completed review of nine prospective cannabis applications and conducted two pre-operational inspections of new cannabis businesses. Next, please. Is that the last one? So grant accomplishments, and I'm really proud of this, because, you know, money is scarce. And so we were awarded nearly $42,000 through the county CAL ID fees for fingerprinting, which is for our LifeScan system. We received a grant for $32,000 and change from the Office of Traffic Safety that we use for those specialized traffic details. We saved the city $22,000, the purchase of a dual-factor authentication system as required for compliance with the Department of Justice and Homeland Security, and we were able to do that. We were awarded $14,000 from the Burn Justice Assistance Grant, which allows us to use that and contract with the county to provide hazmat assistance in the event, or also to have the bomb squad respond in those instances where we have bomb threats or bomb incidents. We were awarded $7,000 in matching funds for the 2020 bulletproof vest grant, so they paid for half our vests that were in need of being replaced during this budget cycle. We were awarded $6,600 in training grants for jail training. And then we were able to upgrade our command post, which was in dire need of upgrade. We purchased gas masks and filters for all police personnel using Homeland Security grant funds. We replaced our 35-year-old HVAC system using salary savings, which did not result in a, and that was a real big achievement for us, because for six months, we looked like we were in the tundra. If you walked into my building, everybody was using pretty much winter clothes to stay warm. We replaced and secured the front door to the police department, and we got that again through Homeland Security funds as well. And as I mentioned before, the dual-factor authentication system. And we updated our officer-duty weapons, which were in dire need because they had reached their life cycle, and we replaced those firearms during this budget, this past budget cycle as well. And Dean? That's it? I thought I had one more. But that's about it. Any questions?
That's about it? That's a lot. Questions for our chief of police. Councilmember Ball.
So it's pretty obvious that we're really behind in a lot of areas, and I think the communities recognize that, we all recognize that. Something I, it's not necessarily something specific, but I just want to put on your radar that's important to me and a lot of people in the community, and that is, after, you know, looking at annual reports from the past 10 years ago, we were proud at the police department to celebrate upwards of 3,000 hours of volunteer effort. And I know we've gone through a pandemic, and I know that volunteerism, I mean, we're pretty strapped right now, but I'm hopeful that it will be somewhat of a priority to, I know we can't get back to that anytime soon, but to make sure that we take advantage of people that are willing to step up and help as much as possible. So I just wanted to put that on your radar and get your thoughts on that.
Sure. We had a great volunteer cadre up until the pandemic, and when that hit, we had to exclude people for their safety as well as ours. So the challenge for us now is that they've been out of service now for over a year, and so we hope that some of those people, because they were longstanding volunteers, many of them have been doing it for 20-plus years, and my hope is that they will return. And, you know, we've extended them, that goes to my point again about community services, when you have those kind of programs and you have meetings and you have that constant dialogue with people, that's how we recruited a lot of those volunteers to begin with. So once we do that, I am hopeful that we will start to see a very robust volunteer cadre once again, because, you know, we used to chart, I forget how many thousands of hours a years, a year that they would come in and work and provide. When we used to do DUI task forces, about 80% of the personnel are volunteers. For Spring Fest, Flower Festival, all those things, volunteers came out with crowd control, traffic control, they helped us out tremendously. Christmas parade, so, or holiday parade, but we've had to say, you know, or suspend that because of COVID.
Thank you. I'm just hopeful that we, you know, as we kind of exit out of the pandemic as much as possible, that we keep priority on that.
Councilmember Cordova.
Chief, I was happy to see some of the initiatives or the restructuring of what you plan to do, and hopefully, if the budget passes, you're able to get those things accomplished, because I think, especially in the areas of community, you know, engagement, that's so important right now with everything that's going on, and hopefully, the funding from the American Rescue Plan Act will help fund those needed items that will take you very long-term in the department, at least for the next few years, and it's like having received a scratcher and we get to spend it, you know? So I'm very happy to see that. I'd like to see, because we didn't get a presentation, like copies of the presentation so that we can actually look at it. Also, I'm more of a paper person.
Right.
Right, no, we, we will get those to everybody and, and on the website. It's, we're literally making changes up until just before.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Chief, big thank you to you and your department. I know that along with fire, you have been, your team has been front and center during this pandemic. You have still gone out into the public and, and been on call every day. And in fact, I know you were back in a patrol car during some of this responding to issues as simple as code enforcement issue, all the way up to responding to an active investigations. And so I realize that you entered it in a difficult position with a shortage of staff and other issues and, and then got hit with a pandemic. So you guys have done an excellent job getting through this and our goal is to find the funds to provide our community with the safety that it expects, that you expect, and that our officers can serve with pride. So I know we have more questions, I know we have a lot of concerns and we have a, a long list of wish lists. So we'll, we'll, we're all committed to working through those and, and trying to find those resources. Any other questions for our police chief before we finish this portion? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
So my guess is your next step was going to have Dean present?
It'll be, it'll be Dean and he's going to flow right into the budget.
Okay. So before Dean begins to speak, I know that this was supposed to be a combined presentation. But because of all of the new rules that we learned just last week and because of some of those rules impacting our wish list and that we eagerly put together a wish list ahead of knowing these rules because the treasury didn't issue them till literally last week, it was over 150 pages and we're still receiving white pages and evaluations. Since we have a June 3rd meeting proposed, my proposal is that we set aside the ARPA discussion till that event on June 3rd so that we can finish providing any budget direction back to you tonight and be able for you to come back on June 3rd with any budget updates for the actual budget and deal with the ARPA funds in a second phase. Because those don't have to be spent right away. They, they don't have to be decided on right away and we need to be really cautious about not creating a situation where we inappropriately spend them and have to repay them at some point.
So the only thing I'll, I'll bring up and it is something I forgot to check was Bill, the man behind the proverbial curtain over there, he informed me via email that the AAW had already rented the chamber and the TAP TV for an event. So I'm going to, on that date, the 3rd, I was going to ask them if there's a way to swap third for second, if they're already sent out materials and whatnot, is the second, June 2nd work for everybody?
Works for me if June 2nd isn't something, if they can't switch between us and we need to do June 2nd, I'm available.
Okay.
Are we all available, Hans?
Yep, okay, thank you. And, and I do agree that's, I had a whole thing to talk about and then it's like, great, they, we got the white papers and as we read into and we went, well, that won't work, this one. So as we go through that, Aaron's in the back reading through the 151 pages right now, trying to be the expert on it. So no, I think that's something we can do.
Okay. Do I have support for that? Councilmember Cordova.
When's our council meeting?
Our council meeting is June 1st. And then we were going to have a special budget meeting on the 2nd because the June 1st agenda really doesn't allow for an additional budget discussion. So they were going to bring back the budget. If we have any changes or recommendations tonight, they need to bring it back to us and we need to have a public discussion and, and get it prepared to accept on June 15th potentially. So we were going to have a special meeting on June 3rd or the 2nd, depending on availability. And if we're going to have that meeting, which we most likely will, have the ARPA discussion that evening because it's itself a very long discussion and we're already at nine o'clock and I, I don't want to be distracted by that and go really late again this week. And I, I respect that. So I'm proposing that right now, as we break, to not even worry about discussing ARPA funds tonight and do it on the 2nd or the 3rd. And that's what I'm looking for support for.
You have my support.
Councilmember Cordova.
Will we get that information, whatever revisions before that though?
Right. So, so though, all of these will be printed and, and, or sent out email, however you want to get it. It'll have all of the results and whatnot in there. The, the issue tonight, as the mayor was saying, is that there's a number of different rules and regulations that weren't there when like, when we first put the survey out, they hadn't come out with it. They said, oh, you can spend it on pretty much anything you want to do. Now the treasury's come out and said, oh wait, you can only spend it in certain categories that fit these designs. And there's also one that says, though it's the final, there's a caveat that says they still make changes later on if they want. So we're, we're digging through to find out exactly what it is. I know there's things, you can't spend it on pensions, you can't spend it on debt service, you can't spend it on some infrastructure, certain infrastructure. It's just, yeah, there's a lot of what you can and can't do. And so we have to go through literally project by project and see if it fits to a category.
And so I think her question is, might we have maybe, the spreadsheet you provided, maybe something before that meeting where you've gone through and say, maybe add a column that says may not qualify?
Yeah, no, we can.
And maybe a shortlist, because I, I've been through enough of the presentations and the webinars and stuff that I know it myself, but I think it would help all of council to sort of have that shortlist of what's, you know, like a white paper.
Right. We, we have a summarized list that was going to be presented tonight that says the project, the amount, and we can add another column that says yes or no.
And I think getting that to us ahead of time will help move that conversation forward on the 2nd or the 3rd. But I just know it, it's such a complex conversation now itself.
Right.
Because it's not just, hey, look, we can spend this money and this is the highlights. It's really more nuanced than that. So if we can get that information and that update and sort of the new list of, you know, highlighted criteria that's impacting the list before that next meeting, then I think, then it will accelerate that conversation that night.
We can, we can do that.
Okay. Does that help? Councilmember Cordova?
Yeah.
Awesome. Okay. Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, I was just going to mention, you know, it'd be, excuse me, it'd be nice if we had a little bit of a break between a meeting on the 1st and then follow up with the budget on the 2nd. I mean, this is a council chamber, so let's have it on the 3rd, one day between our meetings. So.
Well, there was a conflict because we've leased out the room and so we're waiting to hear back if they'd be willing to switch.
Like I said, this is a council chamber. This is our chamber. Then the second thing on it is, like you were saying, a summary of this as it happens would be nice. I, I don't want to read 150 pages plus go through a budget. So if we could get some type of a summary that would tell us what we're allowed to do well before that meeting, it would be a good, a good thing.
Yes. If I could, one, one thing I know, I read through it a little bit this morning and they, they didn't give us enough time to actually spend the money in 1231 to 2024.
2024 is the expiration date. So you're right, we don't have to rush into the ARPA funds.
Yeah, yeah, we have time.
Councilmember Ball.
Two things. We, we do need to still stay very serious. I know we don't need to rush into it, but our need is so bad, we've got to get this done quickly. I, with all respect to the city staff, I have to emphasize any guidance that we can get. We've put the community through this process and survey, they've written down their, you know, their goals and hopes. I know we don't have guidance, but for us up here that want to communicate with our constituents and update them and be transparent, it's so important for us to kind of know what we're talking about. And if we're showing up the day of to decide how to allocate all those millions of dollars, I, that won't make me happy at all. So as soon as we can get any sort of clarity, that's super important to me. Thank you.
And, and to staff's defense, they have been busy finishing the actual budget book and I was the one sitting in on all of the, the sessions and forwarding all the slides and they're now going back into those recorded presentations, because all those presentations were recorded and beginning to work on those white papers for us. So, so that, that's the only reason I'm, I'm, I'm saying what I'm saying, simply because of my personal investment. But it's absolutely correct that you all should get these, these, this information in a way that helps you communicate to the community.
Yeah. No criticism of staff. Look, I know how short-staffed we are and how overwhelming it is to put some of this stuff together, especially when there's one person in a department. But again, it's our job up here to communicate with our constituents, to bring clarity and to help them understand how we can move this community forward. So us being prepared is, is so vital to this question.
Councilmember Cordova.
So what I'm hoping to see is, as, as Councilmember Ball just stated, there was already a survey that went out. If there is items on that survey that can now not be completed because of the modifications, then I expect to see like a reduced list of those items and then maybe an explanation or areas of where we could spend the money. But obviously, we're not going to reinvent the wheel and start adding other items. Does that make sense?
Right. So that's what we're trying to go through right now because we, Dean and I sat there this afternoon going, well, could that fit which one of these categories? It's, it's, they don't come down and say yes or no to a lot of these, so you have to look at it and say, could we pass an audit on that one? So part of me says, I know, you know, Councilman Ball said move quickly, but the other side says, I want to make sure we follow every rule that they have so we don't get audited. Because if you get audited and you don't make it, you have to pay it back. So maybe push the ARPA piece out, continue with the budget piece and then the ARPA, we can come back.
Well, and again, that's what I'm saying is, tonight, we're not talking about the ARPA. If we come back on the 2nd or the 3rd, that you can do a presentation for the public, we'll get the information ahead of time. You can do a short presentation to the public and that conversation continue. Because again, it doesn't have to be spent immediately, it needs to be spent wisely.
I just, I want to be sure we can fit and we can, you know, go through each one because there's a lot of projects on there and decide if they can and can't. Some of them I know.
Now that you have the actual evaluation information, so. Any further questions, Councilmember Cordova?
Yes. Okay. So I realize that there, there are some, as Councilmember Ball said, there are some items that in my opinion are emergency and if those items qualify, I think that there is a sense of urgency for those items, in my opinion. Also, isn't it, didn't we say that this money is going to be given in two lump sum payments?
That is correct.
So maybe it would help if we could use that to lump sum payments and determine what we're going to do with the first half of the money and those are the emergency items that we need to get done.
And that was, that was the plan before they put out the new report, was to prioritize them first half, second half. And now we have to go back and prioritize them again as what can and can't go forward and then do the, which are the more important ones to move forward.
Councilmember Starbuck.
When are we required to have the budget done?
By June 30th.
June 30th?
Yeah.
Otherwise resolution for extension, so.
Yes.
Okay. So we have agreement that we will only move through with our actual budget discussion tonight and any of the ARPA fund discussion will be put off to the next meeting. And in between that, a new assessment of our laundry list will be created and a white paper of highlight of the rules provided to council to prepare for that discussion.
Correct.
Okay. So we're good on that one. Do you need a vote on that? No, because we all got agreement? Great. Okay. Dean, it's all yours for the budget.
Right on. I'm Dean Albro. I'm the Management Services Director and I'll be due management services department. So the management services department is broken out into four sections. We have finance, utility accounting, information technology and purchasing. It comprises about 40 people there. And one thing that management services does is just like city administration is, we provide a service to every other fund. We're, we're basically an internal one. We do accounts payable, we do, we track all the fixed assets, we report to CalPERS, we do all the bank reconciliations, we pay everybody, we manage the investment pool, we do the biannual budget report, which you'll get tonight. And we do the comprehensive financial report, which is basically the actuals that we report. We report that to the state, federal, we do tons of federal reporting. We're the ones that get to do the rate studies for both utilities and services. And we also have a division here that we do for the utilities where we collect and bill for all the utilities. One of the main things that we want on our goals here for next, this budget cycle is to convert our vendor payments to ACH. That's pretty important to me. And of course, finish with Tyler Munis migration. It's been a five-year trip and we still probably have two more years to go. Rocky Road. Another one of our divisions is information technology. They maintain all our PCs, update our software and they make sure we're connected to the servers. They also have an internal service fund that they manage that is for printing, do all our publications, track with the postage, do all our mailings, they do, they maintain all our copiers. We also have a division that does the GIS mapping. And one of, they have a few upgrades that they need to do this time and some upgrade servers will be on their, their to-do list. We also have purchasing, which starts the ball rolling when we do all our procurements for goods and services and make sure we're following our Muni code when you do those purchases. And they also manage a lot of our inventory in, in the warehouse for water and electric, both at the corporate yard and the V Street yard. And they do all those things. That, that's really all I'm going to talk about for my division. I wanted to take time and, and pass out the budget book, so I'm going to switch gears real quick. Give me a sec. Yeah, I always try to give you guys gifts. Reading material. Before I get started, I want to thank two people that are instrumental to making this budget book happen. That's the one passing out the book there, that's Chrissy Donnelly and Aaron Keller in the back, administrative aide, sitting back there reading the ARPA stuff. They did a great job. This is an awesome book. I, I really pushed them to try and get this thing out so you guys would have a lot of time to look at it. You have almost a month to look at it. I think that's the first time in a long time that we've actually done that. Took a lot of work to get that ahead of schedule and get that out to you, but I think it's important. I think there's a lot of good stuff in here.
Can I, I want to throw in Dean's name too. He rebounded, came back and took it on and, and really got through the whole process and I, I didn't think we were going to make it through as quickly as we did.
Yeah, this was a challenging year, both personally and, and here on this. But yeah, it's a great book and I'm, what, what I want to do tonight is just really just briefly go through the book, tell you where things are so you know how to, my, you know, go through the book and find that information that you're looking for. Of course, at the beginning, we have the table of contents. Whenever I do these publications like this, I always like to start really broad and then at the end, I like to get really specific and drill down on things. So when we start out, I'm pretty much saying where Lompoc is on the map, you know, how they're incorporated, climate, really general. We get into the community profile and we, we tell a little bit about the history of Lompoc, the services that we provide here, the utilities we have, you know, housing, talk a little bit about our tax revenues, you know, what, what it make, what the makeup is our tax revenues and sales tax as well, a little bit of a profile there. We also cover, you know, our major employers. And then we move into our org chart. We have our board and committees, our government and how it's structured, our executive team. And then this is really where the budget pretty much starts. This is like an executive summary you'd get in any kind of report. The boss gives a, you know, an overview, what is in this budget, what, what changes and what expectations you see. You see some of our FTEs there, our comparables to other cities. We talk about our general fund, what our revenue stream, what, what we're seeing in our revenue streams, what we're going to see in our expenditure streams. Talk a little bit about our, our long-term debt, both pensions and our retiree. One of, one of the nice things about this slide here is, we're, last year we were at 88% for our retiree health. So I'm pretty excited. I think we're going to be close to 100%, which means we have enough money in the bank that the interest we earn will pay our benefits, which is good. That's good. That's something that was started in '09 and it's nice to see it fully funded. Let me talk a little bit about the utilities and what their net position is going to look like through this process. And, and then a summary, I know the boss talked about it, how we didn't have to do cuts this time in order to put this budget together. That was a good, that's a good thing. As we move forward, we have the resolution, this is just a example or draft. This is a new section that we're adding to this. We're still trying to achieve the GFOA award for the budget book and we're getting really close. I think we're going to try and submit this year for the first time. I'm pretty excited about that. But it goes over the budget process. I've got our timeline in there and I think we're still working on that TBA there when we're going to do the. Um, I'm pretty excited about that. But it goes over the budget process. I've got our timeline in there, and I think we're still working on that TBA there, when we're going to do the second meeting. And then this drills down a little bit, discussion on that. And then this is, uh, how we adopt our, our appropriations, and there, there's our governing body. I, I think one thing we need to put in the budget is a new projector, I, I... We can do better than that one. Um, there's a summary there in the beginning too as well, for our FTEs, our full-time equivalents. You can also see our personnel changes, we're proposing to reduce our FTEs by one. Uh, and then most of the book, really, and you've already had it, everybody talked about their achievements, um, you know, it goes over the different sections, and it goes over all the divisions, how much they cost. Uh, and each one has their mission, the services, their accomplishments, their objectives. A lot of them have, uh, performance measures, so they can, you know, show you how they're doing and, and their progress. Um, I'm going to skip over all these, you, you, you've already been to the show, so, sorry about this, I'm going to cursor all the way through this. And I'm going to cursor to the details section, I'll give you a page number in a second here.
150?
149, 150, somewhere around there.
Where it's supplemental schedules and wide item details?
Sorry. Oh, there we go. So this is the supplemental section, like I said, I like to drill down on, on the details. Um, it's broken out by governmental, proprietary, and fiduciary, basically the general fund, other governmental funds, which are our special revenues, basically, uh, CDBG, streets, and money that's earmarked. Um, then, of course, the utilities, we have our internal service funds, and then our fiduciary fund, which is money we hold for other people. And then, this, this is a description, so you can read that if you want, but... Just up this slide, and this, I'm going to explain a little bit how, how the book is, um, laid out. In, in the first column, in our detail here, you'll see our actual from last year. And the second column is going to be our estimates or projections for this year. And then the next two columns are the appropriations that we're, um, requesting or adopting. And you can see that we have a surplus of around 400 and 1.6 million. I know that sounds like maybe a lot, but we haven't negotiated, like the boss said earlier, any cost limit adjustments, and you pretty much add a modest 2%, and that pretty much shoes that up. Also keep in mind that our reserve policy is that we're going to try and make it up in five years, and we should be putting close to 2 million aside, but we're not, uh, if we utilize all those resources for the colas. Anyways, it go, all the book goes through it, uh, this is all the way through every fund. I'm not going to bore you with every single line here, but I'm going to advance to the next section. The next section is our, a drill down on our FTEs, excuse you, how much, how many positions are allocated at each one of the divisions. Real quick, I'm, um, that, that's it, that's the budget book. Yeah, I know it's a, a bunch of pages, and, um, we can talk about details. The other thing I'm pretty excited about... Is, this is the first time we actually presented the capital improvement program booklet. I thought it was important that we put this together. It, it, it tells you, the council, on what projects we're proposing, we're not just showing you a blank number and, without details. It also lets our citizens know where we're going to spend their money, and what kind of services we're going to provide them. So I wanted to tell a little bit about what you see in this booklet. Of course, they have a table of contents, and there's just some descriptions of, uh, what happened and the changes in the executive summary here by the boss. And we have the same stuff as we have in the budget book, to know who we're talking to, but it's important, I wanted to stop at this page, and this is the summary page, and the whole booklet is laid out this way. I don't know, what page is that, Mayor?
12.
12, okay. Make sure everybody can follow along. So when you look at page 12, I'll use as an example, in column one, we have the first year of the budget, and that's the detail of what is in the budget. In column two... Oh, thank you. Column two, we also have the second year of the budget. Ooh, that is right. Keep in mind that those are the only things that you guys are, uh, that's the detail for the backup. There's no appropriations in the, in the CIP that you're approving, it's information only. It's a drill down for you guys to look at it. Um, the, the next two columns, you'll see the next two budget cycles in there, so this is a six-year look at. The last two columns, there's, you're not approving any of those. That's information only, that's just planning of what we think we should do. So there's, you're not approving those at all. The first two columns, that's in the budget, that's in the budget book, that's the, the drill down on the, what's in the budget book. So, just wanted to make sure you knew that, you're not approving any project that's in the, 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 the next two budget cycles, that's just for information. If I could, let me see, I want to, if I could, I'm going to cruise down to one of them, so you can see how... For example, here's police. And when you look at the tables, you'll see the projects, this is a summary sheet for the police, so they have three projects they're proposing they want to do. And if you look down at the bottom, you'll see that it's unfunded, which we haven't identified a funding source for this. That's why it's over in the next budget cycles. Oh, I can do it, I'm sorry. I can't see the numbers.
33 says park improvements, project Beatty Park.
Beatty Park, yeah. So I thought this is a good example to demonstrate that, so you can see what I'm talking about. In the first table, you'll see the expenses, that's what they anticipate spending, but down at the bottom, you'll see their funding sources. So they have some CDBG funds, and they have a portion that's unfunded, that's pushed out. So you can see that they're planning on doing some work that Chrissy had talked about for Beatty Park, and they're going to be using CDBG funds for that.
And any of the unfunded is they're still trying to identify funds if they want to do the full project, or that portion of the project might not get done?
Yes, or it's a need that they are hoping in the future that we can bring it to the next budget cycle.
Prop 68 in this, in this scenario, it might be something like Prop 68 funds.
Yeah, it may be something they want to do, but we just can't, it's not a priority, unfortunately, but it's identifying what needs are, so we can all say, we want this added, we want that added. So I, I just wanted to briefly show you how it's laid out. Uh, it's a lot of material here, and, um, I, that's why I wanted to get it to you early, so you have a chance to read through it and look it over, and that way, when you have questions, you can... My door is always open, if you want to come in and talk to me about the budget book, about how things are laid out, um, why we did what we did, I, I'm, I'm available anytime. I know Jim will be too, so we... But we can also talk about it on our next meeting too as well. So it's a lot of material we're giving to you. Um, it'll be available on our webpage, so if anybody in the public wants to look it over, they can. And I'm here for questions.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Yep, Mr. Albro, thank you. Um, just real quick, a couple of questions. In the budget book, page 158, we have the internal service charges. Are these also referred to as the enterprise reimbursements?
Uh, let me hang on, give me a second, 158?
Page 158, yes. Internal service charges.
Oh, from the general fund?
Revenues to the general fund.
Revenues to the general fund, yeah, the, the administrative service charges would be, um, part of the cost allocation, um, some of the other ones...
Cost allocation, then not enterprise reimbursement?
No, no. So that's like, wha- what, um, HR charges for doing, uh, water and electric?
Okay, so this is all part of the cost allocation, then. Are we going to get a copy of that?
Yes, we will get that, um, on the webpage as well. That, I didn't have enough time to get that prepared.
A hard copy, though, I mean, would we be able to get one?
Sure, sure, but it'll be a little later, because I didn't have, I, I feel like we really compressed this guy.
Oh, no, understand. Pilot programs on the next page, on 160 is...
I'm sorry, I just, I just answered the first line on that one. You, you are correct, though, at the bottom, you'll see all the, um, uh...
So where it starts with, um, airport.
Reimbursement?
Airport.
Airport down, those are...
Those are part of the enterprise reimbursement, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then the equipment use charges are an internal service that are also charged against the enterprises?
Uh, the internal service charge for engineering, that's an estimate, it depends on how much work they do, we've been, on average, they've been doing that much work for their divisions and departments that come back to the general fund for engineering.
Okay, and the parking lot in Lou, is this the only pilot program that we have in general fund revenues?
Oh, I'm sorry, what line?
On page 160?
160. And which one are you on, sir?
It was just where it says parking lot in Lou, is, is this considered a pilot program, you know, payment in Lou?
I'm not sure, it doesn't look like, it looks like they're just money sitting in there, it's earning interest. I'd have to get back to you.
Okay, well, we got, we got a couple of days, that's why it's always nice to have a day between, a day or two between a meeting and a budget.
Dean, um, so all of the requested positions that were presented tonight are in this budget, except for the one mentioned by community development underneath the, um, the one additional FTE under neighborhood preservation, is that correct?
I think there is a, um, a handful of them that weren't approved. I mean, there's limited resources, and unfortunately, we didn't fund all of them, there were a lot of them that...
Okay, so if we could get versus what was presented and requested is actually in here, and what additional positions might be desired by those departments, so that we can understand what's missing from the actual budget would be helpful, because we didn't get a handout from everybody. So that would be helpful of, it's proposed and therefore in the budget, because you're already asking for it, or you asked for it and it wasn't part of the budget, but you'd still like us to consider it, would be helpful.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns?
I don't have a question, I just wanted to say, there's a lot of reading that I'm going to be doing, and I encourage the community, uh, this is a lot of stuff for our council to go through, so if it is accessible in public, look into it, dig into it. If you have questions, let's, let us know too, we're, we're going to be doing our due diligence. I know this is going to be a tough year for you guys with limited staff. I do want to commend you for, I'm a visual person, so these books are very helpful for me, and, uh, almost a page-turner, so congratulations on this hard work to get it to this point, and I look forward to you guys answering a lot of questions.
You bet, a lot of resources, a lot of moving parts.
And if any, any of the council went to meet with Dean and myself, or one of the other, we'll absolutely come in, or we can go meet you wherever you have questions.
And then the last part to this is because you are, it is a draft, and we are going to put it on the website, it'd be great to do a press release and, and promotion, that it's out there and where the links are, so that it's easy for people to find, they don't have to go hunting through the website, maybe even a link on our landing page, so it's, here's the budget documents, not having to dig through our, our website to try and find them, that would be really helpful. Any other thoughts, directions tonight? I, I, I know we just got a bunch of information, and I thank all of the departments for the updates, um, it's really important that our community be able to see and hear the accomplishments, especially given the pandemic, um, and then to understand what, what, um, we're trying to accomplish in our community by continuing and improving services, especially as we come out of the pandemic. So I thank all of the departments, um, for all their hard work, and for the presentations tonight, and to you, Dean, and your staff for, um, producing, um, a very in-depth, and yet at the same time, very beautiful, um, books. So, um, congratulations.
A lot of good pictures in there.
Yeah, you guys did great, given, um, it was a difficult year without a lot of events to go grab photos of and things like that, so, um, you guys, um, I know we're working really hard, and you had some new staff members from the last time you produced this, so you were getting, um, staff members up to speed on, on how to do this, and, and, um, doing it under unique circumstances, so...
The two people I think that did most of the coordinating, um, I think this is Christie's first real, real book that she did, and it's, it's so was it?
And Aaron has been with us a few months, and...
Dumped a ton of work on them, and they really did a great job with it, and thank you for those kind words.
So, so thank you for that. Any other questions? Well, um, we would normally take public comment, so we should. So I'm going to open the floor for public comment, if you would like to come forward for the, um, speaking in the room, you're welcome to, um, come forward, you have your three minutes. If you would like to call in, the number to call in is 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. And Madam Clerk, I'll ask, did we receive any written communications for tonight's meeting?
We did, yes, one.
And it was printed and posted on the website?
Yes.
Thank you. So the floor is open, if you would like to speak on, um, tonight's issue, or contribute to thoughts that we should consider as we examine the, the budget, you are welcome to come to the microphone for your three minutes. I'm going to give it a little time, because there is a transmission delay with the phone call offer, and wait to make sure that the phone isn't closed for callers that might suddenly decide at a quarter or 20 till that they'd like to call in. So I appreciate all of you that came out and sat through this, and, um, I welcome you to examine it and reach out to us, and if you come across questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to reach out to us, as we dig through, um, this next two-year budget cycle. Seeing no one call in, we will close public comment, and we will adjourn to the Lompoc City Council meeting, a regular meeting for June 1st at 2021 at 6:30 PM.